All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Special Meeting. This special meeting is being held through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Monday, January 4th, 2021. I will now call the role Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Vice Chair Knuckles.
He's muted.
I can see him, he is muted.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
I'm here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner De Laus.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin. Don't see him in the room yet. Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampechon.
Here.
A quorum is present. Let's turn to page one in the calendar, Report Section, Borough of Manhattan, Calendar Numbers 1 and 2, CD5, Calendar Number 1, C200123ZSM, Calendar Number 2, C200124ZRM, in the matter of applications for special permit in a zoning text amendment concerning the court theater for favorable reports on calendar numbers 1 and 2. Chair Lago.
I want to proceed my vote by thanking the commissioners for the thoughtful consideration of this project, which I believe sends a message about our confidence that Broadway Theater and more broadly, our cultural sector, our city, will return to thriving, and with that, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
I am hopeful as well, consistent with what the chair has just said, I vote yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
I share those sentiments, I can't wait to get back into live theater, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Keep hope alive, yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De Laus.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
I agree with all of my colleagues' sentiments, but I also want to particularly compliment the staff on a draft report that I think is really superbly written, it's elegant, it's clear, it's comprehensive, and includes some poetry. And so I'm voting yes, because as our report indicates, this is going to signal the city's faith that the Broadway Theater industry will continue to be a rich thread in New York City's cultural tapestry. Because that sentence is in there, I vote yes.
Commissioner Marin, he is connecting with audio, we can come back to him. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechon.
Yes.
Chair Lago, would you like me to wait for Commissioner Marin to connect?
We could ask him to raise his hand if he is in support of this.
Yes, we can see him, we have visual. He may not be able to hear us. Mr. Marin, if you could raise your hand to indicate either support, or I guess you could give us a thumbs down if you wanted to vote no. He may not be able to hear us.
If we could keep this special public hearing meeting open, just for the purposes of Commissioner Marin connecting, but otherwise move on to the review session, a little bit of an unusual procedure posture.
What we can do is record his vote when he is on, he can tell us how he wishes to vote.
Great, thank you, and is there any other business before this special meeting?
I will just note that favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 1 and 2. And, there we go, Commissioner Marin.
Yeah, I was having a part time with my audio, so I'm sorry, I know there was a vote on the floor.
Yes.
Which was?
Regarding the court theaters.
Oh yes, my vote is yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, recorded.
Thank you.
Right. There are no other items on this agenda for the special meeting, and this.
So the meeting is closed, and we move on to our review session.
Review session. All right. So now for the review session of the New York City Planning Commission of Monday, January 4th, 2021. Before we begin our regular agenda, we have a special presentation from Kate Lemos McHale
Can I just dive in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Lago and Commissioners, I'm Kate Lemos McHale, Director of Research at the Landmarks Preservation Commission. And presenting the designation of the East 25th Street Historic District in Brooklyn. The East 25th Street Historic District is a remarkably cohesive group of 56 row houses built by a single developer, the Henry Meyer Building Company, between 1909 and 1912. All were built in the Renaissance Revival style and remain well-preserved. At our public hearing on September 22nd, 2020, eight people spoke in favor of the proposed designation, including representatives of Community Board 17, the East 25th Street Block Association, Historic District Council, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, two former presidents of the East 25th Street Block Association, and residents of the proposed district. In addition, the commission received 17 written submissions in favor of designation, including from New York City Council Member Farrah Lewis, New York State Assembly Member Rodney Spishot, representatives of the Brooklyn Botanic Garden, Vanderveer Park United Methodist Church, East 26th Street Block Association, and residents of the proposed district. We also received a petition from the East 25th Street Block Association in favor of designation, signed by 66 people. And we received no opposition to the proposed district. Next slide, please. The historic district extends along both sides of East 25th Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D in Brooklyn's Flatbush neighborhood. In determining the boundaries of the district, staff analyzed a broader area and concluded that this block stands out within its larger neighborhood context for the quality and consistency of its architecture and the high level of historic integrity. Next, please. As shown on these maps, the historic district owes its exceptional cohesiveness and strong sense of place to three major factors: its construction within a very short timeframe by a single developer, its architectural consistency entirely in the Renaissance Revival style, and its excellent historic integrity. All 56 houses remain well-preserved. Next, please. Flatbush was initially its own town, developing separately from the city of Brooklyn and its annexation by Brooklyn in 1894, until 1894. Although the Brooklyn Flatbush and Coney Island Railroad linked the neighborhood of downtown Brooklyn in 1878, Flatbush remained largely rural until the 1890s. This map from 1873 shows the location of the historic district on what was still the Vanderveer Farm in southeastern Flatbush. It also shows the new Prospect Park to its north and west, which would be the focus of the neighborhood's most intensive early residential development. Next slide, please. Residential development in Flatbush was originally focused in the areas directly east and south of the park in the late 19th century, which were also convenient to the Brooklyn and Brighton Beach Railroad. Important early developments included sections of the Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District east of the park, the Prospect Park South Historic District with its opulent freestanding houses, and suburban developments further south, including Ditmus Park, Fisk Terrace, and Midwood Park, all designated historic districts. The East 25th Street Historic District is the first historic district in Flatbush, east of Flatbush Avenue. Next slide, please. The area around the historic district, as shown here in the 1905, remained semi-rural in the early 20th century, consisting mostly of wood-framed buildings scattered along an incomplete street grid. Next slide, please. But within a few years, new transportation routes to and through the neighborhood spurred intensive development in the vicinity of East 25th Street. Major transportation improvements included the Nostrand Avenue Streetcar Line, five blocks east of the historic district, which crossed the New Williamsburg Bridge in 1906, shown here, and linked Flatbush with Manhattan's Lower East Side. West of the historic district, a substantial upgrade and expansion of the Brighton Railroad in 1908 brought it essentially to its present form as the city's B and Q lines, and was heralded as one of the great transportation highways of the metropolitan district. Next, please. The Henry Meyer Building Company purchased the site of the historic district in the spring of 1909. This property was still, was part of the former farm outlined in blue, established by Cornelius Jans Vanderveer soon after leaving Holland in 1659. In 1790, it belonged to his grandson, also named Cornelius, whose household consisted of five white males, five white females, and 10 enslaved people, whose genders were not recorded. The farm was known to generations of Flatbush residents for its enormous windmill, shown here, that sheltered African-American families seeking refuge during the 1863 draft riots. By the 1890s, Vanderveer descendants began selling off portions of the farm. Next, please. Developer Henry Meyer was born in Germany around 1864 and immigrated to the United States while still in his teens. Starting in the 1890s, his firm constructed approximately 700 houses in the Cypress Hills section of Brooklyn's East New York neighborhood, illustrated here on the left. Possibly due to Meyer's membership in the Cortel U Club near East 25th Street, he ventured into the Flatbush market, and the earliest houses on the East 25th Street block were completed by the end of 1909. In a December 1909 advertisement, Meyer claimed, "We transformed East New York from a wilderness to a city. We are now operating in Flatbush and are going to duplicate our former success." Meyer's ads highlighted the area's excellent transit facilities, clubs, and schools, easy access to Brighton Beach and Coney Island, and the privacy that only a single-family house could offer. Modern features included parquet floors, up-to-date plumbing, laundry facilities, and oak and birch trim from the company's own mill. Next, please. Meyer's East 25th Street houses were executed in the Renaissance Revival style, featuring limestone or brownstone fronts, full-height rounded or angled projecting bays, foliated keystones, and classically ornamented entrance surrounds and cornices. Reflecting Renaissance design principles, each of the two rows on either side of East 25th Street is symmetrical, and the two rows are mirror images of each other. Unlike similar houses constructed elsewhere in Brooklyn at that time, which were constructed as more affordable two-family homes, these were billed as single-family houses reflecting Flatbush's affluent reputation. The architect of record was the small Williamsburg firm of Glucroft and Glucroft, which may have based the houses on slightly earlier ones in nearby Prospect Lefferts Gardens. Next, please. This map, from shortly after the historic district was built, gives a sense of its remarkable cohesiveness, which in addition to the quality of the architecture, stands out in the surrounding area. This area's irregular grid with short and angled streets and history of primarily small-scale development contributed to a diverse array of building types in both masonry and wood. Buildings tended to be built individually or in small groups, making the long unbroken rows of East 25th Street especially distinctive. The block to the east on East 26th Street was also developed by Meyer, however, those houses are a different style, quality, there's more variety of type, and they are considerably less intact than the block of East 25th Street. Next slide, please. During their early years, East 25th Street houses were owned and occupied by families of white merchants and other upper-middle-class professionals. Notable early residents of the district included suffragists Nellie Marshall of 360 East 25th Street, who marched with her daughter Ruth in Brooklyn's first suffrage parade in 1913, and remained active in the Flatbush Political Equality League for several years afterward. She hosted at least one suffrage gathering in her East 25th Street home. Flatbush native Austin J. Tobin, who led the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey for 30 years, moved to 364 East 25th Street in 1929 and was promoted to Executive Director while living there in 1942. Tobin had a major impact on reshaping New York and the region, spearheading major projects, including the World Trade Center. Next, please. In recent decades, their ownership has come to reflect Flatbush's increasing diversity and the growth of its African-American and Afro-Caribbean communities. Today, most residents of the historic district have roots in Caribbean countries, including Barbados, Jamaica, Guyana, Trinidad and Tobago, Grenada, and Belize. Caribbean immigrants began buying houses in the block in large numbers in the 1970s and 80s, and were instrumental in founding the East 25th Street Block Association in 1985. The association has played a leading role in cultivating and fostering the block's remarkable community spirit, organizing a variety of block-wide programs since then. Since first entering the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens Greenest Block in Brooklyn Contest in 1999, the East 25th Street Block Association has earned four first-place finishes, an award for Best Children's Garden, and numerous second-place and other honorable awards. It has also been recognized for its mentoring of other nearby block associations. And in our process of studying and ultimately designating this district, we worked very closely with the block association and residents of the block, and had really wonderful conversations and great support for them, and the care of their homes, and this block is really evident and shows through. Next slide, please. The remarkable dedication of the district's homeowners and residents to the continuing beauty of their block is evident, not only in the lush greenery of their front yards, but in the outstanding integrity of the East 25th Street Historic District. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the incredible visuals. And I'd now open it up to any commissioners who would have any questions or comments.
This is Michelle, Miss Lemos McHale, I think she answered my question, which is the block, I think it's the East 26th Street, you basically said you did look at that block as well, but decided not to move forward designation because there wasn't quite as intact, is that right?
Yeah, it is quite a different overall character and quality on that block, and much less intact.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Back to Ryan.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda, which is a pre-hearing review of the historic district designation in Brooklyn Community District 17, Alalaya Carrier is our presenter.
Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners. All right, so this is an application by the Landmarks Preservation Commission to designate a portion of the East Flatbush neighborhood as the East 25th Street Historic District in Community District 17 in Brooklyn. The proposed historic district encompasses 56 properties and is comprised of two-story row houses located along East 25th Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D. Next slide, please. The surrounding area contains primarily residential properties interspersed with house of worship. Commercial uses are primarily concentrated along Flatbush, Rogers, and Nostrand Avenues. The historic district is located within R6 non-contextual district. R6 districts allow for housing to be developed under height factor or quality housing regulations. The surrounding area consists of some R6B, R5B, R6A, and R7A contextual districts. Contextual zoning districts regulate the height and bulk of new buildings to produce buildings that are consistent with the existing neighborhood character. Commercial overlays are mapped along Flatbush, Rogers, and Nostrand Avenues. C1 and C2 districts are mapped within residential districts along streets that serve local retail needs. Typical uses in C1 and C2 districts include neighborhood grocery stores, restaurants, and beauty parlors. Next slide, please. The immediate surrounding area is primarily low-to-mid-density residential buildings with commercial use is concentrated on avenues. The Flatbush Avenue Regional Commercial Shopping District is 1 to 2 blocks west of the historic district, and the historic King Cedar and Art Deco Sears Flag Chicken Store are 3 blocks to the north. The area is well-served by public transportation. The 2 and 5 subway lines, their stations are located at Beverly Road and New Kirk Avenue, about 4 blocks to the east, bringing the area's residents to downtown Brooklyn and lower Manhattan in 15 to 20 minutes. The MTA B44 Select Bus Service runs north-south along Rogers Avenues and Nostrand Avenue, immediately to the east of the historic district. Local bus services include the B49, the B41, the B103, and the B52, and the B8. Next slide, please. The East 25th Street Historic District is a cohesive and intact group of 56 row houses built in the Renaissance Revival style between 1909 and 1912. With their prominent full-height bays and classically-inspired ornaments, the handsome understated houses are typical of the Roman Renaissance Revival row houses built throughout Brooklyn in the 20th century. Each of the houses are four basic types, with either a limestone or brownstone front with round or angled bays. Next slide. The Renaissance Revival style features include their symmetrical rows, full-height bays, carved ornaments, and cornices. All of the facades remain intact today. Next slide, please. On the basis of this history and architectural significance of the area, LPC found that East 25th Street Historic District contains buildings and other improvements which have a special character and a special historical and aesthetic interest and value, and which represent one or more areas in the history of New York City, and which cause this area by reason of these factors to constitute a distinct section of the city. The Department of City Planning is unaware of any conflict with the zoning resolution, projected public improvements, or any plans for development, growth, improvement, or renewal in the area involved. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lilia. Questions from the commission? Okay, well, we will then see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Hey, the second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in the Bronx Community District 6. Our presenter is Chetan Horseman.
Great, good afternoon, Commission, and happy new year to you all. This is a presentation for the Arthur Avenue Hotel rezoning. Next slide, please. This project is by 2461 Hughes Associates and is located in the Belmont neighborhood of Community District 6 in the Bronx. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone from R6, an R6 with a C24 commercial overlay, to a C61 district, and an R6 with a C14 commercial overlay, as well as seeking a zoning text amendment for MIH. Next slide. For context, the area has a number of major institutions and destinations proximate to the proposed rezoning area, which is the area identified in red in the middle, including Fordham University, immediately to the north, New York Botanical Gardens, the Bronx Zoo to the east, Fordham Plaza, which is located along Fordham Road, and is also a major commercial corridor and transportation hub in the Bronx, which has a Metro North Station, as well as St. Barmuss Hospital and the Belmont Little Italy Neighborhood immediately to the south. Next slide, please. The Belmont Neighborhood is home to the Bronx's Little Italy, which also contains the Belmont Business Improvement District, and is well-known for the number of quality Italian restaurants in the area. This map shows just the restaurants in the area. Next slide, please. Here are several pictures of the Little Italy streetscape, which is just 1 block south of the proposed rezoning area, which is the 187th Street and Arthur Avenue intersection, which is easily identifiable by the Italian flag colors painted in the street, in the top-left image there. You can also see in the top-right image, the Arthur Avenue North View, the restaurant on the right, which is also a location of the proposed commercial overlay, and a butts Chicorron Park. Just past the park in the picture is the proposed site. So you can also see from a couple of the other images, really the scale of this area and the restaurants and institutions. So these past 3 slides were to provide context that this area is more than just a local destination, but is also a regional destination with a number of institutions, businesses, and restaurants for people visiting the Bronx. Next slide, please. This area is predominantly zoned as an R6 district with a C45D located along Fordham Road, and a commercial overlay running along Arthur Avenue, where it connects to the Bronx's Little Italy. The media area is a mix of 2- to 7-story buildings containing residential uses, commercial uses, and a couple of schools. Next slide, please. The proposal is seeking a zoning map change that is split by Chicorron Park. The northern area has Arthur Avenue to the west, Hughes Avenue to the east, and 188th Street to the south. This area contains 9 zoning lots, 7 of which are owned by the applicant, and contains a total of 20,500 square feet of lot area. The 2 lots that are not owned by the applicant contain approximately 7,000 square feet of water. The southern area contains the existing restaurant, fronting Arthur Avenue, that was shown in the previous streetscape picture, and a parking lot fronting the Hughes Avenue side of the street. You can see the Arthur Avenue 187th Street intersection, 1 block south, which I noted was identifiable by the Italian colors painted on the street. This site is essentially the gateway into the Little Italy neighborhood, and development of this site would further enhance that vision. Next slide, please. Image 1 shows the non-applicant-owned building in beige, which is expected to remain and contains 9 units. Image 2 shows the intersection of 188th Street and Arthur Avenue, along with the existing funeral home. Image 3 shows the intersection of 188th Street and Hughes Avenue, along with the existing Realtor Agency. There's another building along 188th Street between these 2 buildings that has ground-floor retail. The applicant-owned buildings have between 2 and 6 residential units located above these businesses. Next slide, please. Image 4 shows the 3 residential buildings that front along Hughes Avenue that are also part of the development. There are a total of 21 units and 4 businesses that would be within the development area. The tenants of the units are on annual leases that would not be renewed. Now I was informed that most of these tenants are Fordham students, and none of the units are rent-stabilized. 2 of the businesses are owners that would relocate their businesses to another one of their locations. Image 5 shows the restaurant fronting Arthur Avenue, immediately adjacent to the half-acre Chicorron Park. Next slide, please. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from R6 and R6 with a C24 overlay to the C61 district, which has an R72 equivalent, for the northern portion, and R6 to an R6 with a C14 commercial overlay in the southern portion. The southern portion of the rezoning area is extending the existing commercial overlay along 187th Street, 20 feet north to cover the existing restaurant, which should bring the currently non-conforming use into conformance and allows the owner to seek a sidewalk cafe. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing 2 buildings within the development area. The building at the corner of Arthur Avenue 188th Street would be the 146-unit hotel that would have a base height of 7 stories, before setting back 15 feet, then rising to 13 stories. The residential building will be at the corner of Hughes Avenue 188th Street and contain 56 units. The building would have a base height of 4 stories, before setting back 15 feet, then rising to 7 stories. There will be 156 parking spaces located within the cellar and ground-floor levels with street access and Arthur Avenue. Both the hotel and residential entrances will be along 188th Street. The ground floor is designed to allow for about 1,400 square feet of retail within 2 spaces, and a 900-square-foot community facility space to further activate 188th Street. The development will total approximately 122,700 square feet, and would max out the C61 zoning district with a 6.0 FAR of development. Next slide, please. Here is the ground-level streetscape rendering of the proposed residential building, along with the existing condition. The applicant is also seeking a zoning text amendment for MIH. The applicant is seeking options 2 and option 4, with option 4 being the workforce option. Both options require 30% of floor area to be for affordable housing units. The main difference is the AMI range with option 2 averaging 80% AMI, whereas the workforce option requires an average of 115% AMI, but cannot exceed 135% AMI. Additionally, no Additionally, no direct subsidies could be used for the affordable housing units using the workforce option. While the AMI of Community District Six is approximately thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, the Belmont Neighborhood is more so considered an emergency, emerging neighborhood, where there has been a number of new developments recently, many which are built to provide housing for the nearby Fordham University students. This area could provide a balance from the lower-income subsidized housing that's typically seen in this community district by providing a permanently affordable, moderate-income building. The workforce option here would also remove the subsidy burden on New York City during a time of economic hardship. Under both MIH options, the proposal would result in seventeen MIH units. Next slide, please. For comparison, here is the same ground-level streetscape rendering of the existing building, along with the proposed hotel. The proposed development site would also create a recognizable building that would frame the streetscape and provide a gateway into the Little Italy neighborhood. Next slide, please. So to sum up the main points, the applicant is seeking a rezoning to C six one that will permit a one hundred forty-six-unit hotel and a fifty-six-unit residential building, along with a zoning text amendment to provide mandatory inclusionary housing. I also want to point out that we received ten letters of support, which includes the Belmont Bid, Montefiore, the New York Botanical Gardens, Bronx Zoo, and Fordham University, as well as a number of local merchants that we will share with the Commission prior to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jutan. Questions from the Commission? If you could use the raise hand function?
Chair, I go, I see Commissioner Marine has his hand up. I don't know if you're.
Okay, yes. Got it. If I could call on Commissioner Mudding?
Thank you, Chairwoman Malago. Thank you for the presentation, Jutan. Very well thought out. I do, I do have a couple of questions based on, you know, what's, what's happening in the neighborhood. So one, one of the things that you did mention is that, first of all, my first question is, why here and why not along the Fordham Road corridor? And I understand that the owner owns the lot, so it's not like we can move the lot to Fordham Road. But why here and not, not where we actually zone for hotel use? I, I'd like to understand the rationale of this better.
Yeah, I, I think to that question, you know, this is a private application and a private applicant that is coming in to seek this rezoning and has this idea of a hotel being built on the site. They see that there are not a lot of hotels in this area, and it's underserved, and that there's a need for it with all the regional institutions in the area. I think more than that, the applicant would probably need to speak a little bit more to some of the reason that they're doing it on the site rather than somewhere else. But, I mean, they do own the lots, which is, you know, part of the reason that they want to.
No, understood, understood. But I do have to ask the question, knowing the reason that we, we've undertaken a couple of years ago. The second question would be that of affordability. I know you mentioned two, options two and four, and I understand that this is an emerging neighborhood, but you also mentioned that, you know, there's a, that the, the higher rate of course AMI may be as a result of Fordham Road students, which I don't doubt, I know that. Can, can you explain the justification for the higher, aside from the Fordham Road student? Can you elaborate a little bit more about the emerging neighborhood, the current AMIs, and where we see AMI going in this neighborhood?
I'd have to get, as far as further details on the AMI, that's something that I have to get more information on. I don't have.
Fair enough.
General.
Yeah, fair enough. I don't want you to shoot off the, off the hip, so fair enough. And then, you know, my last question would be along the lines of the, the, the requested zoning, the C six, C six one, and, you know, the building, the residential building next door and its size and its capacity. Do these fall in line with the existing fabric of the current neighborhood? I, it is going to be a very tall building. I know the corner very well. I think it will sit well there, but I'd like to understand the justification a little bit better, and what are we doing to the existing neighborhood to try and keep that intact as we build this facility?
Certainly. I think, you know, on its face, the C six one has an R seven two residential equivalent. The current is an R six, you know, and both in the R six, they could build a height factor building, which could be taller and change the scale. This building has a Mac, the R seven two has a hundred and thirty-five-foot maximum building height, which they're seeking. In the same sense, an R six building, if it had saw the quality housing with MIH, it would be one hundred and fifteen feet. So there's essentially a twenty-foot difference in increment. Additionally, this is also next to a large open park. It's about a half-acre park. So there's kind of this large area where there's light air, open space, especially on the southern end of the site, so it really opens up. So it's not, the taller building would not be putting like shadows and other things right directly on the park where, you know, it's a large feature. So I think that that's, to talk further about it, I think that's a kind of a larger question that I think the applicant will respond to, but I just want to give some basic thoughts on the zoning district and advancing it to the, the certification.
All right. Thank you, Jutan. That's it for me. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mudding. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Mudding's initial observation regarding Fordham Road. I, I think this is a building that would be much more compatible with Fordham Road and the Fordham Road that was envisioned by the rezoning from several years ago. While I, I certainly understand the efficacy of having a hotel in Belmont because of the cultural history and what have you, it just struck, a thirteen-story building on that corner just strikes me as, as being really out of scale. And I'm just wondering, is, is only a C six one with an FAR of six, is that the only commercial zoning that would, that would accommodate a, a hotel on that site?
I can verify and get back to you. I, from where they're at with the current R six, you know, they do need a full, the commercial district in order to allow for the use of the hotel. But I can get back to you on the details of other options. I, you know, I think that part of the discussion was that this is an R six district today in order to get a mandatory inclusionary housing, which is something that is important. You know, there has to be some sort of upzoning, essentially, and the R seven two is really one incremental step above the R six district. But to get into more detail, I would have to get back to you on that.
Jutan, I could add a couple of things to that as well. And good afternoon and Happy New Year. Going, going back, I, I think there's a couple of things. This is understanding the, the push for Fordham Road, and that's certainly what we looked for with the rezoning there, but this is a pretty unique site. And as you're coming off Fordham Road into Arthur Avenue, this really does kind of serve as a gateway, as Jutan pointed out, to into the market and into the bid. So I, I think for that sense, it is appropriate, can really serve to kind of draw people in to the Arthur Avenue Retail District. But the district itself, and while understanding that C six districts are typically reserved for more central business districts, in, in looking at the site, it really gives you the balance of commercial FAR and residential FAR, which is just a step up from the adjacent site. So it seemed to be the right mix and really allowed for the, the hotel site and for the balance of residential. So after looking at it, this seemed like the, the right district for the, for this site.
I would also, I was, I would also add, add to the early expressed concern around the MIH classification. While it would arguably address a Fordham University constituency, I don't, I don't think it would necessarily be responsive to the immediate affordability requirements of the indigenous neighborhood and its residents.
Sure. And we can have them provide more detail on, on the rents in this area and the surrounding area as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Vellows?
Commissioner Mudding and Vice Chair hit a number of things that I was going to say. I, I will just note that in the presentation, when you talked about the MIH option and including option four, that it would remove the subsidy burden, option two should do the same thing. The, the MIH unit should be created without subsidy regardless of option two or option four. So it would definitely be helpful to get more information about the rents in the area. I wanted to ask about the other two properties that are not owned by the applicant. I think you said that one of them has nine units. You mentioned that the owner's units were not rent-stabilized. It'd be helpful to know information about whether or not any of the other units that are not owned by the applicant are rent-stabilized. And then it'd also be, I mean, has this been presented with, to the community board? I, I mean, what, what discussion has happened at the community board thus, thus far?
It has been presented several times to the community board, including in December, and they give a general supportive recommendation. You know, that was non-official referral or ULE, but they did give a full presentation, and the community and the people attending seemed very supportive. But again, that needs to go through the official ULE for that kind of final discussion with the Commission. I will get the information on the other units. The one building that's fully in is a nine-unit building, which is fully residential, and then there is a partial building next to that, which has five units, and there's several commercials, but I can get you even more detail on that following up.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rampershot?
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of quick questions. Commissioner Marine and Vice Chair Knuckles raised a lot of the questions that I actually had. I guess two questions I have for you was, has a vendor been chosen for the hotel, or are they in talks for the particular vendor for it? And the second question I have is, looking at their plan with the, with regards to the curb cut on Arthur Avenue, have they considered one eighty-eight Street in terms of access to the site? Was that looked into?
So the vendor question, they had started some discussions with vendors, but then they paused during the COVID nineteen time. So I think the applicant can speak further to that. They do not have a vendor selected, though, at this time. For access to the site, the access for the retail community facility, the hotel, as well as the residential building, would all be on one hundred eighty-eighth Street. The parking would be the access along Arthur Avenue, the parking garage in the building.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the site plan, just see the curb cutter access only on Arthur. So you're saying that they will access through one eighty-eight?
Yeah, the, the building entrances will be along one eighty-eighth Street.
But for parking access and loading, that's coming from Arthur Avenue.
Correct. Yeah, the, the parking will be on Arthur. All the other accesses, access will be along one eighty-eighth Street.
Just want to note that this is a rezoning, so the site plan's illustrative, so things like where the parking and loading are located, I mean, that's probably what they're intending, but they're not, you know, that's not guaranteed. So, you know, we'll have, I think we should have the applicant to speak to that more when this comes back.
Yeah, thank you. Good point, right?
Thank you. Commissioner Papelli?
Commissioner Rampershot asked my primary question, so I'll just say that absent kind of a name-brand operator of the hotel, a unit of this size would concern me in a residential facility, in a residential community like this.
Thank you. I'll make sure the applicant is aware.
Commissioner Ortiz?
I, yes, I, I would agree with some of the concerns with respect to height, the absence of a hotel operator at this location, and, and also to Commissioner Rampershot's point, a curb cut along Arthur Avenue, which is a really important pedestrian street, and creating twenty-two-foot curb cut there, I think, is really, you know, really undermines that street, which is such an important destination within the city. So, you know, if there is some way that we can get it, if there's some way there could be assurances that, or a way to explore preventing that curb cut at that location, I, I think that we would want to for the benefit of the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Bernie?
Yes, thank you. Just to add to that, I mean, it seems as though we're putting a lot of parking on the ground floor, which is always something I would hope we would avoid, because it just means that that part of the street is dead. I see they've got parking in the cellar, but do they have to have parking on the ground floor? And it takes up most of the, the ground floor footprint, as far as I can see. The other thing is, I was looking at the shadow studies, and although Philip Habib opines that they're not significant, there are, and even though the park is south of the building, there are certainly shadows cast on the park, and I just wonder whether that isn't something that could be mitigated in the design of the massing of the building, because it, it does have this very thin and very tall slab, which is the source of the, of the bigger shadows. That was my only comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin?
Well, as long as we're putting issues of concern out here that we'd like to hear further about, I'm curious about the rooftop recreation space that's planned above the first floor of the hotel within the courtyard, and what kind of quality of, if it's to be used for hotel guests, what kind of quality of life challenges will that present for residents of the surrounding buildings, including the proposed MIH building?
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. Other raised hands. Okay, not seeing any. This application is certified.
Thank you all.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is a non-ULEP referral of a minor modification to a previously-approved special permit in Manhattan Community District One. Our presenter is Allison Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. The Bank of New York Mellon proposes a modification to a previously-approved special permit. The proposed action would modify the special permit drawings to remove the reference to public lobby on previously-approved ground-floor plan and make improvements to the project area's open space as a POPs. Next slide, please. The project area shown in the red outline is two forty Greenwich Street. It is mapped within a C six four zoning district within the northwest corner of the special Lower Manhattan District, Community District One. The predominant land use within the surrounding area is commercial use, including large commercial office towers. Residential and mixed-use buildings are located within Battery Bark, Battery Park City to the immediate west of the project area and in the Tribeca neighborhood to the northeast. The surrounding area features several historic buildings, nearby open spaces, including Rockefeller Park to the west, Battery Park City Ball Field to the northwest, Bogartis Gardens to the northeast, and Silverstone Family Park to the southeast, and the nine eleven Memorial to the southwest. An approximately ten thousand square-foot privately-owned public space, or POPs, is located immediately to the north at one eleven Murray Street, and an approximately three thousand five hundred square-foot POPs is located two blocks to the west at forty-three fifty-one Park Place. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation, with subway stations for the one, two, three ACE, R, and W, and the World Trade Center PATH station within a five-block radius of the project area. Bus service is provided by nearby stops for the M nine, M twenty, and M twenty-two bus lines, and there are several city bike stations within a five-block radius of the project site. The Battery Park City Ferry Stop, which serves multiple ferry routes, is located three blocks to the west of the project area. Next slide, please. The project area, again, within the red dash line, consists of Manhattan Block one twenty-eight Lot Two, which has an area of approximately hundred and three thousand square feet. The project area is an irregular-shaped lot with frontages on Greenwich Street to the east, Murray Street to the north, West Street to the west, and Barclay Street to the south. Only one other lot exists on the project block, which is one twenty-five Barclay Street, which contains a single office building. The current tenant is DC thirty-seven Union Offices. Next slide, please. So to give some context to the proposed action, I will provide some history of the site. In nineteen sixty-one, the site was designated as Site Six on the now-expired Washington Street Urban Renewal Area Plan, as you can see on the far left of this diagram, highlighted in red. As part of the urban renewal plan, it was envisioned that the then-parking lot would be transformed into a commercial office building, and the development of the site would help to revitalize the neighboring sites as a cohesive neighborhood. The Washington Street Urban Renewal Area expired in two thousand two. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. In 1980, the New York City Planning Commission did a series of actions. They amended the Washington Street Urban Renewal Area in contemplation of the development site. They approved the city's lease of the site to the Irving Trust Company, and they granted a special permit that permitted modification of heightened setback regulations in order to enable the development of a 23-story commercial office building in the site. The modification of heightened setback regulations were required because the building slightly penetrates the, the applicable sky exposure plane along Barclay, Greenwich, and Murray Streets. The special permit facilitated the development of a building with approximately 995,000 zoning square feet, or an FAR of 9.58. Next slide, please. These three approvals in 1980 anticipated a developer of 240 Greenwich Street would maintain an elevated north-south pedestrian walkway that would connect the second level of 240 Greenwich Street to the building north of Murray Street and to the building south of Barclay Street. The plan also contemplated a pedestrian land bridge connecting pedestrians from the 240 Greenwich Street zoning lot to the area west of the West Side Highway. Next slide, please. Through the lease, the Irving Trust Company was required by the city to allow the public exit from and entrance to the building through the main ground level entrance at or near Barclay Street, and public access to the second-level walkway. Here we see the ground floor plan as part of the CPC-approved special permit drawing set, identifying a public lobby outlined in yellow. Aside from what is shown in the drawing, the special permit report does not mention the public lobby space. Next slide, please. The elevated public walkway was to be accessed from within the lobby of the building by escalators running to the second level. Here we see the second-level floor plan as part of the City Planning Commission-approved special permit drawing set, identifying the elevated public walkway and location of future sky bridges. Next slide, please. In December 1989, there was an amendment to the Washington Street Urban Renewal Area, eliminating both the north-south pedestrian easement across Barclay and Murray Street, and eliminating the elevated public walkway within the building. According to the CPC report approving the urban renewal plan amendment, the focus of HPD had shifted from the second-level pedestrian easement to improvements to Greenwich Street pedestrian activity focusing on renovation of the street. The city lease agreement of the property was also amended in 1990 to reflect this change, eliminating references to both the ground floor and second-floor public access. Concurrently, the special permit was modified by the CPC to eliminate the elevated public walkway and second-story public access in the special permit drawings. So here we see that revised second-level floor plan with references to a second-level walkway and bridges removed. Next slide, please. The 1989 and 1990 modifications, however, did not make any alterations to the ground floor plan, and thus the reference to a public lobby remains. The record of past actions is silent as to why the label "public lobby" remained as part of the 1990 modification. The space was never intended or designed to be amenity in itself. None of the previous actions or amendments provided for or prescribed any hours of operation, design, or dimension, public amenities, or any other features of the public lobby. And the building did not receive any floor area bonus or specific bulk waiver related to the provision of the public lobby. The Bank of New York took over the lease in 1982. And in September 2018, the Bank of New York exercises option to purchase the site from the city. Next slide, please. Now we'll go through some existing conditions on the site today. Next slide, please. Here is the site plan of the existing conditions on the site. 240 Greenwich Street is the larger building on the east of the block. The building's orientation within the zoning lot, which is the red dashed line, permits generous open space along the project areas West Street, Murray Street, Greenwich Street, and Barclay Street frontages. However, this open space is not required and is not considered a POPs. A three-block driveway connects Murray Street and Barclay Street, and also provides access to the project area's loading dock. There is a single neighboring lot on the block, Lot 126 or 125 Barclay Street. This neighboring property holds a perpetual easement for vehicular and pedestrian access from Murray Street to the building's loading dock and the building entrance. The two buildings share a single curb cut on Murray Street. Next slide, please. Today, the project area is improved with a 23-story building seen here. The building's entrances are located within the northeast corner of the buildings, oh, sorry. The building's entrances are located along Greenwich, Barclay, and Murray Street. There are two retail spaces, which are located on the northeast corner of the building's ground floor, which is the corner that we see in this view. The building rises to a height of approximately 264 feet before setting back in a series of setbacks from Greenwich Street, and ultimately reaches a height of 359 feet. The building slightly penetrates the required sky exposure plane along three of its frontages. Next slide, please. Here we see photographs of the Barclay Street frontage. On all frontages, the sidewalk seems very wide to a pedestrian view. However, we are seeing both the sidewalk and the project area zoning lot as the building frontage is set back from the zoning lot line. The large planters that we can see in this view are within the zoning lot boundary. Next slide, please. Here we see Greenwich Street frontage, which is acts as the main entrance to the Bank of New York's headquarters. Again, those large planters that we see here are wrapping around all building frontages and are within the zoning lot boundary. Next slide, please. Here we see the Murray Street frontage and sidewalk. Murray Street is the most highly-trafficked pedestrian way, with pedestrians, pedestrians traversing Murray Street from Battery Park City to access Greenwich Street and the financial district beyond. Here in the bottom image, we also see the through, through-block vehicular access point. Next slide, please. Walking further along Murray Street, here we see the largest open space on the site at the corner of West Street and Murray Street. On the bottom image, we see a clear view of 125 Barclay Street and their loading dock and building entrance. We can see that there are very few amenities in this open space, a few trees, and a city bike dock. Next slide, please. I'll now review the proposed conditions. So again, the applicant proposes to modify the special permit to remove a reference to a public lobby on the ground floor. This proposed action does not include any physical changes to the building itself. However, the applicant proposes to enhance the outdoor space within the zoning lot with new landscaping, lighting, seating, and other amenities, and would establish the outdoor space as a public access area, or PAA. The PAA would be subject to Local Law 116 of 2017, as amended by Local Law 250 of 2017 governing POPs. The PAA signage will be governed by DCP rules applicable to POP signage, identifying the PAA and making it clear to pedestrians that the space is available, available for public use 24 hours a day. Consistent with the standards for plazas, the applicant will record the approved drawings, along with the commitment to make the space accessible to the public on a 24-hour basis, and maintain the space accordingly. The design of the PAA was guided by the standards in the zoning resolution governing public plazas. As shown on the drawings included with the application, the proposed project would include a 23,800 square feet public, public access area, or PAA, that would provide a variety of opportunities and spaces for passive recreation, while continuing to provide paths for circulation between West Street, Murray Street, Greenwich Street, and Barclay Street. Would provide many seating options, including benches, movable tables and chairs. Provide new planting areas throughout the PAA, including 48 trees. A drinking fountain and several bicycle racks are also proposed. Next slide, please. So here we see a zoomed-in view of the Murray Street frontage. The remote, the proposed amenities along Murray Street will provide amenities for public, such as seating, trees, planting, and bicycle racks. As I mentioned before, Murray Street is the most highly traversed street by pedestrians. The proposed design will help to knit a residential and commercial neighborhood with amenities that can be used by both communities. As part of the proposed project, the applicant intends to divide the existing curb cut into two curb cuts that will maintain unobstructed vehicular access to both driveways. A planter will be added on-site to separate them and protect each driveway. Security gates will also be added on the site to protect the applicant's driveway located to the west of the building and the loading docks. Next slide, please. Here we see a closer look at the Greenwich Street public access area. The Greenwich Street is the main entrance to the building's offices and to the building's retail space. We see that the planting beds are pulled into the building frontage to allow for more generous space for pedestrians to circulate the sidewalk. Next slide, please. Here we see a closer look at Barclay Street. We see planting along the street and another small passive recreation space on the corner, which is Kitty Corner from Silverstone Park. Planting beds, trees, and seating elements are throughout the space. And next slide, please. And now I'll just go through a series of renderings showing in, in three-dimensional view the, the, what we just saw in plan view. So this is the corner of Greenwich Street and Barclay Street, again, showing that small seating area on the corner, Kitty Corner from Silverstone Park. Next slide, please. This is the corner of Murray Street and West Street. The 125 Barclay Street is in the background. Next slide, please. Here's a close-up view of the plaza. This is what we would see as a pedestrian walking along the sidewalk on Murray Street. You can see proposed public signage and artwork, proposed seating and planting elements. Next slide, please. And again, another close-up view of the plaza with proposed movable tables and chairs amongst existing tree, main trees. And next slide, please. Oh, sorry. There we go. To conclude, the applicant proposes a minor modification of the previous CPC special permit to modify the approved plans to remove the public lobby label in the ground floor plan, and to reflect the improvements of an existing outdoor open space as a public access area to, public access area. This project is a minor modification and would be referred to Manhattan Community Board One for 45 days. And I will now take any questions the commission may have.
Before turning it over to the commissioners, I wanted to make two observations. One is that currently, if one walks along this area, it is pretty barren and windswept, and not in keeping with the lively character of Greenwich Street, but also the fact that it is a major east-west connection to get from downtown to Battery Park City. So I'm very pleased to see the upgrades, which I think will benefit the residential community. But also, when we return to offices, the lower Manhattan business community that's there. The other thing that I want to note is that we are pleased that the applicant's commitments to provide public access and to maintain this new amenity will be memorialized in a manner that's consistent with other POPs. And with that, I'll turn it over to commissioners. And I see Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. I, this certainly, that looks like an improvement. I would add to the, the fact that Murray Street is a corridor is one contributing factor there, but this is just a daunting building. You know, those great slabs of sort of mirrored glass that were such the fashion in the eighties when these buildings went up. I mean, it's a, it's a scary place to walk around. I mean, just, you know, just sort of overwhelming urban design scene, and this will certainly soften that. In the, the proposed plaza area at the corner of Murray and West, that right now there's a very large city bike station. Has there been a reload, will that be relocated someplace? Or simply eliminated? Because it seems like maintaining, although there are several other large city bike stations nearby, maintaining the city bike capacity in that neighborhood will be important.
Um, thank you for the question. We do not know where the city bike station would be moved to. You're correct, there are several other city bike docks in the, in the nearby area. The applicant believes that they have the ability to cancel their contract with the city bike with 90 days advance notice. But it is our understanding that as of today, the applicant has not exercised his right to cancel the contract.
Yeah, that, that may well be true and correct, and they'll do what they need to do. But I think as we plan for improvement of this area, we ought to encourage, we ought to work with or encourage the applicant to work with city bike to find another location, because it's important to retain the capacity.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And from walking by it, it is a very heavily-used city bike station. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Allison. Yeah, you know, I think in general, this is a huge improvement. I also know that little plaza at Murray and West Street, and you wouldn't want to sit there now. So this looks like a, a big step up. So that's, that's great. The, the one thing I would take issue with would be the, the bollards. You know, this business of completely encircling buildings in bollards is kind of like, you know, fighting the last war. I, I don't think as a counterterrorism strategy, it's really considered useful anymore. You know, when you look at, when you study these things, and I can go into this at length, but the Oklahoma City bombing, for, for example, the truck was parked across the street in order to maximize the impact on the facade, not close to the building. You can't demolish a modern building by driving a truck into it, you know, because the columns are too frequent. And the fire department really don't like them, because it stops people aggressing the building if they have to, and it stops the firefighters getting into the building quickly. So I think they should really rethink. There used to be, within NYPD and City Hall, like a bollard committee that would review buildings that requested bollards and opine on whether it was appropriate. I don't know if that process still exists, but I, I do think we should rethink the bollards.
Um, thank you. This is a great, excellent point. That, that process does exist. The applicant has gone through such a process with the NYPD. NYPD recognizes the site as high-risk, and they are in the process of reviewing the placement of the bollards in tandem with other relative agencies, such as the Public Design Commission. The placement of the bollards is located at the curb and therefore is outside of the zoning lot. So it's, it's being proposed in connection to, but separately from this application.
Yeah, no, I understand the, everybody wants their, but I remember years ago, it was, I think it was on Madison Avenue, that shoe store, Manola Blannick, said they wanted bollards outside. And it's, well, you know, we're very high-security. And they said, no, you know, you're not, yes, we are, we're having a sale. So everybody thinks they need bollards. I'm not so sure.
And Commissioner Bernie, I mean, this is Eric Bosher from the Manhattan office. I just wanted to, hello. I just want to, you know, acknowledge, you know, the point that you make about the bollards. It is something that we, you know, certainly look at. With a critical, bollards are being proposed in public spaces, you know, in POPs. So as Alison notes, the bollards are located at the curb.
Eric, I think you're cutting in and out a little bit.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, I'm, I'm I'm very sorry. Can, can you hear me now? Sure.
Oh, I, I think I'll just suggest that, you know, thank you, Commissioner Bernie, for, for this point. I, I think it is an important one to make, and it's something that we can continue to discuss with the applicant. You know, it is outside the zoning lot, but it is something that, you know, we think it's, it's very important to, to consider seriously the placement of bollards close to public spaces. So we can continue that conversation.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorolo.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I raised my hand before Eric spoke. So I, all, all I wanted to say is, and I believe I could fill in some of the blanks to the parts of the sentences we lost that Eric was stating, but I, I, I think he probably framed it best. This is a huge issue, and I think we would all agree that public safety is paramount to the enjoyment of, of public spaces, whether public, public spaces or privately-owned public spaces. But this is a NYPD-driven issue, much to the concern and ire of the private sector, who are developing privately-owned public spaces and other city agencies, who are doing their best to create friendly welcoming areas. And again, I'm not undermining the public safety that comes with these things. But this is a huge issue for us as planners. It's a huge issue, I think, for communities. I, I'm not surprised to see this as part of the proposal. But just in recognition of Commissioner Bernie's comments, I think they're very real and probably come at a very good time. Because in, in my experience, in, in talking about developing public spaces, because in my experience, in, in talking about developing public spaces, big and small, bollards are at the top of the list for the PD, and everyone is, is sort of accepting that point of view. And so at some point, I think there needs to be a very coordinated discussion in understanding what is really necessary and what other options there may be to create public safety, but without literally bollarding in the whole city. Because at some point, that's exactly what will end up happening. So I just add that comment to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you both for raising this issue. I don't see any other raised hands, so we will refer this matter to the community board for 45 days.
Thank you.
Right. The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Two. Our presenter is Andy Cantu.
Good afternoon. As you may remember, this is a private application by 65 Spring Realty LLC for a good faith marketing special permit to allow use group six retail uses on portions of the ground floor and cellar of an existing five-story mixed residential and commercial building at 65 Spring Street in Soho, Manhattan Community District Two. The site's located on the north side of Spring Street between Crosby Street to the west and Lafayette Street to the east. The 1945 square foot lot contains a five-story tenement building built in the late 19th century with ground floor retail and a use group two rental dwelling units on the upper floors. The first floor contains two legally non-conforming retail units with 1,377 square feet of total floor area. And the cellar contains an additional 1,329 square feet of accessory space. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to expand the ground floor by 344 square feet and the cellar by 375 square feet. The proposed expansion will allow the creation of two ADA accessible bathrooms on the ground floor, additional accessory space in the cellar, and a new exit stairwell from the basement to the rear yard leading out to Lafayette Street. In order to grant the special permit, the commission must find that the applicant has undertaken a six-month marketing effort to rent the space to a conforming use at fair market rent. From April 2018 to June 2019, a period beyond the required six months, the applicant advertised the space for manufacturing, service industrial, and other conforming uses at $80 per square foot for the ground floor and no charge for the cellar square footage. The applicant's marketing efforts included placing weekly advertisements in the New York Times, listing the space online with two brokerage firms, and mailing information to various industry groups. Despite these efforts, the applicant represents that there was no success securing as-of-right uses for the space. Four inquiries from interested parties were documented. One was seeking space for non-conforming use, two determined that the space was too small, and a fourth prospective tenant seeking a short-term lease was unwilling to provide evidence of financial solvency. Next slide, please. This application was referred to Manhattan Community Board Two on November 2nd. The community board voted unanimously to deny the application, basing their denial in part on, quote, "the flawed requirements of the good faith marketing effort program." Their rationale is explained in greater detail in their resolution, which is included in your briefing packet. Despite the denial, the board stated that they do not believe that the proposed use would harm neighborhood character if the following requests were included. Prohibit eating and drinking uses, keep the two stores separate, submitting a tenant protection plan that includes maintaining residential emergency egress and managing trash, developing a plan for safe excavation and protection of the adjoining buildings, providing documentation of illegal easement onto Lafayette Street from the rear yard, and agreeing that no mechanical equipment be put on the roof of the extension and move any venting so that it doesn't disturb the residents. Next slide, please. The borough president issued a recommendation to approve the application with conditions. She echoed many of the same reservations as the community board, including how fair market rents are determined and potential disturbances to the residential tenants and the neighboring building. The approval is conditioned on completing a good faith marketing plan with a revised advertised rent based on additional market research and resolving all open DoUB violations and providing a plan for the safe excavation of the site and securing protections for the building and adjoining buildings. We've spoken to the applicant about the stipulations and conditions, and they'll be prepared to substantively address both the community board's and borough president's concerns on Wednesday. The applicant also prepared a formal response letter, which was included in your Friday packets. And with that, I'm happy to take any follow-up questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Bernie.
Thanks. Do we know why, do we know why the community board don't like eating and drinking? It seems to me that's a, isn't that a constitutional right or something? I mean.
I think their concern has mostly to do with sort of the quality of life issues, you know, potential for noise, additional trash. They do note that this is a particularly narrow sidewalk next to the Spring Street stop. So that's where most of their concerns are coming from.
Well, okay.
Mr. Knuckles.
Thank you. Andrew, would you just tell me the distinction between an M15A district where this use would be as-of-right as opposed to the M15B where this, this building is located? I just, it's an interesting distinction. I just wanted to understand.
So the primary difference between an M15A, which is located closer to the western edge of Soho, near to Sixth Avenue, buildings with lot area less than 3,600 square feet, retail uses, use group six retail uses are allowed as-of-right on the ground floors. That's one of the primary distinctions between M15A and M15B. In M15B, it doesn't matter the square footage. It's not allowed below the level of the second story.
So the distinction is that M15As are further west and closer to Sixth Avenue? There's no building distinction difference, architectural.
I, I could, I could chime in here if, if I may. The, the reason for distinction between the M15A and M15B districts when the reason, when the zoning was mapped here in 1971 was that the M15B districts and generally buildings were larger and were still occupied by industrial business at the time, whereas M15A districts were populated by more smaller loft buildings that already became obsolete and vacant for manufacturing businesses. Therefore, the ground for use restrictions were less strict, and you would be able to have retail and other types of commercial uses on ground for as-of-right.
Thank you. That's edifying.
Thank you, Sylvia. Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I guess I have, I have two questions that I address to the staff, and it's about the admittedly flawed nature of this whole special permit process. I think we know that. That's one of the reasons we're pursuing the Soho-Noah rezoning. So hopefully, these kinds of applications will become extinct sometime. How in the world, am I correct that this space hasn't been built out yet? So how can you effectively market a tiny amount of, in space for an industrial use if it doesn't exist? I mean, it just strikes me as a complete fiction that we require applicants to go through this marketing exercise. And then I had a question. So if staff has any guidance on how you think about this, I'd be grateful for it. And also staff guidance on this whole subject of the advertised rents. Is $80 a square foot currently what you all are thinking is an appropriate rent to be used in these kinds of situations?
Right. So I'll, I'll speak to the second question. I'll let Sylvia speak to the first question. $80 per square foot is consistent with past 74, 781 applications you've seen. With this particular case, it's, I think it's important to note that the $80 per square foot is only for the ground floor. The cellar is being included with no additional cost, so it's closer to $40 per square foot. And speaking to the, the borough president's recommendation about, you know, $35 per square foot in the garment district, I think it should be noted that that space, $35 per square foot, that quote is more for space above the first floor, so not ground floor space, which is what is being advertised as part of this application. And they're, and they're also, you know, very different submarkets when it comes to commercial space.
Thanks, Andy. And I would address the first question. I, you know, obviously, we absolutely agree with Commissioner Levin's evaluation that these good faith marketing applications are, you know, outdated, and they, they, you know, kind of outlived their usefulness in many respects. And I think that is something that has been echoed as part of the community engagement process in 2019. With regards to whether or not it is acceptable for the applicants to advertise a space before it is constructed, I'll, I'll note that it is not, you know, unprecedented to market a space with the anticipation of, of a new space becoming available in, in real estate. And that in the context of good faith marketing applications, the commission has seen a few of these similar ones in the past. I'll note that 363 Lafayette Street was a, the most recent example where the applicant was constructing largely as-of-right office building with, you know, and pursued the good faith marketing application. And then an earlier example would be the Crosby Street Hotel, where the ground for uses were sought as part of a good faith marketing application. Hope that answers your question.
Well, yes, you know, but honestly, you know, it just demonstrates the foolishness of this whole approach because none of those, would never have, in my time on this commission, have we had someone go through this effort and turn up an industrial tenant. And it's especially ridiculous that we expect that to happen or require an applicant to go through these motions for space that doesn't exist in, in tiny quantities. It's just silly in this case, but it's, we got to do what we got to do. I understand that part.
Thank you for pointing it out, and I very much look forward to a day where the commission doesn't have to use its valuable time on a matter like this, but also that the department will have additional planning resources freed up to engage in the good substantive planning that we love to do. Any other raised hands? Okay, then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, the fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of an amendment to an urban renewal plan in Manhattan Community District 10 and 11. Our presenter is Annie White.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The Harlem East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan is black today for a pre-hearing review. I am here presenting on behalf of Jose Trushos, who is out today. Next slide. This is an application by HPD for an urban renewal amendment to the East Harlem, Harlem Urban Renewal Plan to extend the duration for 40 years for continued agency administration and management of the plan in community districts 10 and 11. For simplicity, I will refer to the Harlem East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan as the plan and to the Harlem East Harlem Urban Renewal Area as the area throughout the presentation. The plan was created in 1968, and since then, 15 amendments have prolonged its duration to December of 2020. The proposed action does not change the geographic scope or propose any new developments on specific sites in the area. Next slide. For a quick overview, the area, which is largely located in Manhattan Community Board 11 and partially in Community Board 10, is generally bound by East 106th Street to the south, FTR Drive to the east, and then over to Madison Park in Lexington and Fifth Avenues to the west. The area encompasses a large portion of the overall East Harlem area and approximately 150 blocks, which contain a wide variety of building types and uses. The area is well-served by public transportation and contains several major commercial corridors, including the East Harlem Special District and the Special 125th Districts, which are in the surrounding area. Next slide, please. So this plan was created to redevelop the neighborhoods of East Harlem and Central Harlem in a comprehensive manner with the objectives outlined here to create a healthy and attractive residential environment in a manner compatible with the surrounding community in terms of scale and reinforcing the existing urban character. The city has amended the plan multiple times, including the last amendment in 2008 with a few amendments up to 2018. So the proposed 16th amendment, which is in front of you, does not modify these general objectives, but extends the term for 40 years. Next slide, please. So through its public review, Community Board 11 held two public hearings in October and voted in November, on November 24th, to approve the action with the following conditions. Amending the renewal term to 12 years instead of the proposed 40 years, having the renewal only apply to the blocks remaining to be developed as part of the East 125th Street Development Project, and to keep the design guidelines in place. Community Board 10 held a public hearing in October and voted on November 4th to approve the actions with no conditions. The Borough Board voted to approve the resolution with the following conditions. That HPD would update every five years, Community Boards 10 and 11 and the Manhattan Borough President, and to alert them of any changes for the acquisition of parcels within the plan. So HPD will be at the public hearing on Wednesday and can further respond to some of the questions that were raised throughout the public review process. But I did just want to briefly touch on some points that they wanted to respond to, to CB 11 and the Borough Board's conditions. So the 40-year term proposed for the extension is a standard for an urban renewal plan extension citywide. Additionally, HPD believes it is appropriate here in this location, given the ongoing development timelines. HPD recently conveyed the first phase of this East 125th Street project, subject to a plan for 40 years. So it makes sense to extend the plan and design restrictions associated with the remaining phases of that East 125th Street project for a commiserate period of time. And regarding the request to only apply the renewal to this, what we refer to as the MEC project at East 125th Street, the majority of the sites in the plan have already been acquired and conveyed, subject to prior versions of the plan. It is important to keep all of the sites in the plan, so stakeholders, including the city, elected officials, and community groups, and the general public can easily research the history of the particular urban, urban renewal sites. And any future acquisitions of sites would be subject to required land use approvals for the particular project. And the current application before the commission would keep the design controls in place of the previous plan. Next slide, please. The borough president voted to approve the action with the same conditions as the community board. I would also note that the Borough President sympathized with CB 11's desire to amend the plan while highlighting the importance of not losing the existing protections. Next slide. Just wanted to briefly show this project as I refer to it, and it was referred to in the Community Board 11's conditions. This is the East Harlem Media Entertainment and Cultural Center site located at 125th Street. This illustration was actually created by George M. James and Associates for Community Board 11 to help illustrate the, the proposal for the plan. So as I mentioned, the first phase of the site was conveyed pursuant to the plan, but there are still other sites that have been acquired and have gone through ULP, but have not yet been conveyed. To ensure that these parcels are developed in accordance with the design guidelines, the urban renewal plan should be in place based on HPD's proposal. And if there's any further questions, they can, on this specifically and how it relates to the plan, again, they'll be here on Wednesday. Next slide, please. So in summary, the approval of the proposed action would facilitate the continuation of agency administration and management as necessary for 40 years, continuous to the prior expiration date. Approval of the proposed actions will allow flexibility regarding sites still under HPD jurisdiction. No project or new construction is associated with this. No project or new construction is associated with this application. I'm happy to answer any, any further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie?
I'm sorry if my questions just sort of expose my ignorance on this topic, but you know, whenever I hear the words urban renewal plan and removing blight, it immediately sets off alarm bells in my head about displacement and lack of community protections. So I'm wondering, I mean, one of the motivations for renewing this apparently was to preserve the protections, is what the Borough President said. So I'm wondering, what are those protections? And who's actually controlling this process? Is it HPD or is it city planning? And how is, how does that process actually play out?
So I, to start, I think that certainly the, the weight of the term urban renewal raises a lot of eyebrows, and it's something that we kind of spent some time talking through with the community boards, and that's a kind of valid red flag. This, you know, every plan is different, and this particular one, what we're referring to is really urban design conditions that are set into place and to keeping the, the scale of development in line with, with the surrounding urban area. So HPD can do a much better job. It is a kind of complicated process, but it would be, you know, that is for potentially future actions throughout the urban renewal plan, but those projects would be going through, you know, additional ULP actions pursuant to each individual project.
So any site that's developed goes through a ULP process automatically or are the as-of-right projects that are considered as a right because they comply with the urban renewal plan?
Generally, I'll note here that generally HPD operates by disposing of property to a developer, and the disposition is subject to ULP. We see any number.
How many, how many of the sites are city-owned sites then, or the many city-owned sites?
No, I know that Jose would have that information ready as he, he had the notes on that, so we can get back to you. There are our remaining sites, but there's no immediate actions for those to be acquired.
We'll be able, HPD will be able to answer this easily on Wednesday.
Yeah, okay, okay. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Annie, just to, okay, thank you.
Not seeing other hands, we will see this at the public hearing on Wednesday when HPD will answer our questions.
All right. Moving on to the sixth item on our agenda, it's a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District thirteen. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just want to confirm, you can see me?
Yes.
Great. You can proceed to the next slide. So this is a private application by Mr. Munir Islam, seeking approval of a zoning map amendment to facilitate development of a two-story commercial building at two fourteen thirty-two Hillside Avenue in the Queens Village neighborhood in Queens Community District thirteen. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is predominantly characterized by one- and two-family homes along the side streets to the north and south of Hillside Avenue. Medium-density residential front the north side of Hillside, and mixed-use and residential buildings are along the south side, including ground floor retail, the second-story residential within the project area. The surrounding area, including the project area, has been zoned R2 since nineteen sixty-one, living uses to single-family detached homes. C22 overlays are mapped to blocks to the east along Hillside Avenue. And although there is not served by pub, any subway lines, the project area is served by several local and express bus routes. Next slide. Project area includes the entirety or portions of seven tax lots. The proposed project area runs the south side of Hillside Avenue between two hundred fifteenth Street and Vanderveer Street. The proposed development site consists of lot three and approximately eleven hundred, eleven thousand square foot corner lot with frontage on Hillside and Vanderveer, approximately eleven hundred square foot rear portion of the lot would be outside of the rezoning area. Next slide. The development site was previously used as an automotive repair and sales facility pursuant to a BSA variance, but has been vacant since the applicant acquired the site a few years ago. Lots eight through twelve are all improved with two-story mixed-use buildings with legal non-conforming ground for retail and residential on the second story. Next slide, please. Following your photos of the existing conditions, photo one on the left is a southeast view development site from Hillside Avenue. Photo two is a southwest view of the project area from Hillside Avenue with the mixed-use buildings in the foreground. Next slide, please. Photo three is northwest view of the project area from two hundred fifteen Street. And photo four is a view of Vanderveer Street from Hillside Avenue development site on the left. Next slide, please. And then photos five and six are views of Hillside Avenue looking west and, and east respectively on left and right. Next slide, please. In terms of the proposed development, the rezoning would facilitate deconstruction of a two, of a new two-story commercial building with approximately ninety-three hundred square feet of floor area. The ground floor would contain approximately nine, sixty-nine hundred square foot pharmacy, and the partial second story would contain a approximately two thousand four hundred forty square foot office, which is intended to support the applicant's onsite pharmacy and other off-site retail businesses that they operate. Although the parking requirements are waived, five permitted parking spaces would be provided for employees. Three at grade in the, in the rear, two below grade access via ramp. A new fifteen-foot wide curb cut on Vanderveer Street would be provided to access the parking, and one loading berth is provided and would be accessed from a new fifteen-foot curb cut on Hillside Avenue. The location of the loading on Hillside Avenue as opposed to Vanderveer Street was made at the request of Community Board thirteen prior to certification. Next slide, please. The building above elevation showing the building height at max at twenty-seven feet with fifteen-foot high ground floor, a twelve-foot high floor-to-floor high, partial second story. Next slide, please. Above is a lustrous rendering showing the corner pharmacy and retail pharmacy on the first story office space on the set, partial second story containing office space. Next slide, please. So to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to establish the C23 commercial overlay on the existing R2 zoning district. The proposed C23 overlay would also bring the existing commercial uses into conformance while retaining the existing low-rise scale of the surrounding area and reinforce the commercial character of Hillside Avenue. Next slide, please. Community Board thirteen voted to recommend approval of the application with no conditions, with a forty-one in favor, one opposed. And Borough President recommended approval on December twenty-third with the condition that a goal of thirty percent for local hiring be met and use of MWBE businesses in a construction development of this project and to also make quarterly reports. That concludes my presentation again for the hearing on Wednesday. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Questions from the commission? Seeing none, we will see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Great, thank you.
Right, the seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and a UDAP designation in Queens Community District fourteen. Our presenter is Hala Salih.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide. This is an HPD-sponsored project within the Auburn Urban Renewal Area in Queens Community District fourteen. The requested actions are for a UDAP zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment. Next slide. The urban renewal area was designated in nineteen sixty-eight and is bounded by Beach Thirty-second Street to the east, Beach Eighty-first Street to the west, Rockaway Freeway to the north, and Rockaway Beach Boardwalk to the south. The goal of the urban renewal area was to facilitate the removal of structurally substandard buildings for the development of new low and moderate income housing. Several developments have been completed within the Auburn Urban Renewal Area, and the remaining portion is outlined in red and consists of the project area seeking land use actions today. Next slide. Following the adoption of the urban renewal area, development of Ocean Village began in nineteen seventy-two, followed by Sea View Towers two years later, and three two-family homes in nineteen seventy-eight. In nineteen eighty-seven, the city concluded that construction of solely low and moderate income housing, as stipulated in the nineteen sixty-eight plan, was no longer desirable as half of the subsidized housing in Queens were located in the Rockaway Peninsula. The Board of Estimate approved an amendment to the urban renewal plan in nineteen ninety, which consisted of various land use actions to facilitate the development of a mixed-use community selected through an RFP process in nineteen eighty-eight. However, this project was never built due to high infrastructure costs and a poor real estate market. In nineteen ninety-nine, the City Council approved the development of Waters Edge, and a second amendment to the urban renewal plan was adopted in two thousand and three, intended to facilitate the Auburn By the Sea project as well as the project area today. The second amendment had substantial changes to the first, and, but retained its predominant focus on residential housing. It also mapped a significant portion of the area as parkland to create a nature preserve and enhance the natural resource protection in environmentally sensitive areas. In two thousand and six, a development team was designated through an RFP to develop the eastern portion of the urban renewal area, and in two thousand and eight, City Council approved a UDAP amendment to facilitate the proposal. However, due to the two thousand eight financial crisis and Hurricane Sandy in two thousand and twelve, construction of the project did not happen. Since then, there have been design competitions in the area to develop resiliently, and the same team from the two thousand six RFP are still with the project today. Next slide. The eastern portion of the urban renewal area is outlined in yellow and is just south of the Edgemere Urban Renewal Area. Other notable developments in the area outside of the urban renewal area are Beach Green Dunes and the Edgemere Commons Development, which all provide a hundred percent affordable housing. Next slide. The project area has a total lot area of approximately a hundred and sixteen point five acres and comprises of vacant and unimproved city-owned land. It is generally bounded by Rockaway Freeway and Edgemere Avenue to the north, Rockaway Beach, and Boardwalk to the south, Beach Thirty-second to the east, and Beach Fifty-sixth to the west. The Auburn East project area is divided into a thirty-five acre nature preserve, a fifteen acre dune preserve, recreation and open green space, and the development area. The main objective of this application is to expand the UDAP designation area to incorporate the nature preserve as well as establish a mixed-use district to facilitate the development of a microbrewery. Next slide. The project area is mapped as parkland within the nature preserve, as well as an R6, R6 two dash four, and a C44 within the development site. The entire project area is vacant and unimproved, with the exception of Public School one oh six, which is not included within the project site. Surrounding land uses include mix of one, two, and multifamily housing, commercial, light manufacturing, and community facilities. Next slide. The image on the left shows the view of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street to be sited with the proposed brewery, while the image on the right shows an aerial view of the vacant development. Next slide. The proposed project is a new community and mixed-use residential, commercial, manufacturing, community facility, passive and active open space uses within the eastern portion of the site, and a thirty-five acre nature preserve within the western portion of the site. Next slide. The proposed project includes the creation of the thirty-five acre nature preserve, mapped as parkland, and would be under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Nearly four acres of the existing impervious surfaces would be removed and replaced with natural beach, sand, and native plantings. The preserve would be publicly accessible via a network of trails with a focus to enhance and protect maritime ecology. Immediately east of the nature preserve would be a multi-family, sorry, a multipurpose building with restrooms, park ranger locker rooms, community space, and a parking lot. Next slide. The development site is anticipated to provide one thousand six hundred and fifty residential units, two hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial development, ten thousand square foot microbrewery, a twenty-two thousand square foot community facility, three point three acres of private open space, and fifteen acres of public open space in a form of a dune preserve. The total of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five parking spaces are envisioned for the development. The overall site plan seeks to create a mixed-use neighborhood with multifamily apartment buildings concentrated nearest to the Beach Thirty-sixth Street Edgemere Station, with typology and density reducing closer to the waterfront. The development is anticipated to provide affordable rental units as well as homeownership opportunities. The developer would also construct three privately owned and maintained streets, which would function as extensions of Seagurt Avenue between Beach Thirty-second Street and Beach Thirty-fourth Street, and between Beach Thirty-Fifth Street and Beach Thirty-eighth Street, as well as an extension of Lehman Road, which would run east and west between Beach Thirty-second Street and Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. Next slide. The proposed development would feature a mix of uses and building types, including attached and semi-detached single-family residences, one- and two-family townhomes, multifamily residential buildings with ground floor commercial use, and standalone commercial and community facility buildings. Building heights would range from one to eleven stories with a maximum height of approximately a hundred and ten feet. The commercial development would be concentrated at the intersection of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street and Edgemere Avenue near the A-Train station, and along a pedestrian corridor that connects Edgemere Avenue to the waterfront. The pedestrian corridor would be anchored by a ten thousand square foot microbrewery, five thousand square foot top house, and a sixty thousand square foot hotel. Next slide. In terms of resiliency, the project provides a fifteen acre dune preserve at the southern boundary of the development, and the buildings are pushed back from the coast with the densest portion concentrated to the north. Rainwater would be harvested for irrigation and stormwater would be managed on site. The base flood elevation of the site is ten feet and is, and the proposed ground floor is projected to be at sixteen feet. Next slide. The proposed actions today include a UDAP designation of forty tax lots bounded by Beach Fifty-sixth Place to the west, Beach Thirty-second to the east, Rockaway Freeway to the north, and the Boardwalk to the south. The UDAP designation would include all block and lots within the boundary except for the parcel with Public School one oh six. Land uses are intended to be residential, commercial, and community facility. Next slide. A zoning map amendment is proposed to map a new MX district at the southern portion of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. The boundary would be three hundred and seventy feet north of Oceanfront Road and a hundred and twenty feet west of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. The MX district would be an M14 R6 zoning district and would permit medium-density residential uses as well as breweries up to ten thousand square feet. The applicant team intends to enter into a disposition agreement limiting manufacturing uses within the rezoning area to brewery use. Next slide. For context, the rezoning area is shown on the site plan in a dashed line. The zoning map amendment would facilitate the development of the proposed ten thousand square foot brewery and the five thousand square foot top house/restaurant. Next slide. A text amendment is proposed to add the MX twenty-one district to the list of special mixed-use districts mapped throughout the city, and no changes to the standard rules for mixed-use districts are proposed. Next slide. Queens Community Board fourteen held a public hearing on November seventeenth, and on November twenty-second voted to disapprove the application with eighteen conditions. The conditions included that the city fund a two million dollar traffic study to widen Edgemere Avenue between Beach Sixty-second Street and Seagurt Avenue, and that no less than forty-five million dollars be constructed on the roadway, that a new elementary school be sited and funded, and that one of the two previously cited schools from Auburn By the Sea be a trade school, that a community district-wide EIS that a community district-wide EIS analyzing traffic conditions be concluded, conducted during the summer peak months, and that a minimum of fifty percent of Community Board fourteen residential residents have preference of all units within the development. Next slide. That thirty percent of the retail and commercial space be reserved for Community fourteen residents and/or businesses, that the parking lot for the multipurpose building be increased by one hundred percent and prevent parking from being used for commuter or overnight parking use, that the city should fund additional seasonal parks department personnel to patrol and maintain the proposed nature preserve, that a minimum of fifty percent of construction jobs be allotted to Community Board fourteen residents, and that twenty-five of those jobs be reserved for residents who reside within zip codes one-one-six-nine-one and one-one-six-nine-two. That the development team shall hire a minimum of fifty percent of Community Board fourteen residents to all non-construction positions such as maintenance and security. That the board has a strong preference for home ownership at eighty percent AMI, and that increase parking to a minimum of two hundred spots for customer and visitor parking within commercial areas of the project. Next slide. That a community advisory board be created and meet in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one to address job training, employment opportunities, scholarships, and other issues. That the design, funding, and construction of active recreation opportunities within or directly adjacent to the nature preserve. That all north or south access roads in the nature preserve from Edgemere Avenue to the Boardwalk have safe street lighting, and that solar lighting be installed on narrow pathways. That access to the beach is constructed in the form of a bridge, a ramp, or a pathway through the piping pullover habitat between Beach Forty-third and Forty-eighth Street, and to legally restrict either through a land disposition agreement or deed restriction to prohibit the proposed hotel to be leased or sold to the City of New York and/or any nonprofit. Next slide. That the proposed commercial area should include uses such as a supermarket, drugstore, fresh produce market, bank, and/or restaurant. And lastly, that the developers agree in writing to maintain all the properties they own and/or manage within the Edgemere and Auburn communities. Next slide. The Queens Borough President held a public hearing on November, sorry, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, and subsequently recommended approval with eighteen conditions, which include that a community participatory visioning session of the nature preserve be conducted, that a detailed plan for improved access to the beach from Beach Thirty-second to Beach Fifty-ninth Streets be provided, and increase Department of Parks and Recreation staff and lifeguards for the eastern end of Rockaway Beach. That new park space within the Auburn and Edgemere community be identified, designed, and built for new passive and active recreation opportunities. Next slide. That new concession opportunities on the Boardwalk with a focus on local providers be provided, and that commitments to local hiring for all construction and non-construction workers on this project include a thirty percent goal for MWBE businesses, local area residences, and union labor. All workers should earn prevailing wages with benefits and regular quarterly reporting on hiring. That there must be a deed restriction or language in the disposition documents specifying the allowable use of hotel, of the hotel site, and that Edgemere Avenue should be widened to accommodate existing traffic and any vehicular traffic that would be added by the large-scale projects that are planned in the area. Next slide. That funding should be committed to implement the goals and strategies of the Department of Transportation's Access to Opportunity Initiative. That a school be included in the plan, and that the Department of Education should commit twenty million dollars to upgrade the technology and equipment in existing and new schools. That a new city health and hospitals corporation facility should be cited in the area to reverse the disinvestment of health facilities, and there should be a minimum of fifty thousand square foot space allocated for a community center use within the project. Next slide. That home ownership opportunities should also be available for all affordable units. That all construction must be done using the most energy-efficient, sustainable materials and construction techniques to combat climate change. That a community land trust should be created, and that a request for expressions of interest should be released inviting ideas to best utilize the former Edgemere landfill. Next slide. That an assessment of recent development and growth to identify what is needed to sustain or enhance this rate of growth, and that transportation service improvements are needed to reduce travel times between, such as providing express service on the A-Train, extending the Q-fifty-two bus service, and extending the ferry service. And lastly, that a community advisory board with local representatives meet with the development team on a quarterly basis. Next slide. In summary, the proposed actions include a UDAP designation to facilitate the development of a nature preserve, and a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to establish a mixed-use district to facilitate a microbrewery. Thank you, and I will now take any questions.
Thank you, Holla. That is a lot of conditions to absorb. I'll ask if any commissioners have questions. Commissioner Delos.
It'd be helpful to have information about the affordability of the units and the unit mix.
Sure, yeah. We'll have the applicant team speak to that. Additionally, I believe in the briefing package on page twenty, there is a letter that HPD wrote to Borough President Richards that speaks to some of the breakdowns in their first phase of what they're intending for the project. But yes, we will make sure that the applicant team speaks to that on Wednesday.
I'll go back and look at that. Thank you. Others? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. It seems that the MX proposed designation in this instance is there to accommodate the brewery. Am I correct in that assumption?
That is correct.
Okay, so while we would all hope that the brewery is successful, if for some reason it turns out not to be, then to reactivate that space, there would need to be a zoning modification, would there not? Or would it be?
So the MX district would include the M-one-four zoning district and the R-six district. So there'd be some uses that would be permitted as of right. Without the brewery, they would still be able to develop without any sort of zoning changes. And then in terms of any concerns of additional manufacturing uses that could be developed, there would be a land use disposition agreement from HPD that would specify the only allowable manufacturing use on that area would be brewery use.
The only manufacturing use?
Correct.
Permitted would be a brewery.
Because of the disposition, the land disposition agreement, there's a level of control beyond zoning.
Okay. All right. I don't know if you know this, but I'm, you know, it was when I was reading this, I was, I was just curious as to how they, aside from maybe availability, how they came to the conclusion that the brewery was the best thrust toward the economic development aspiration that this project has, as opposed to a light manufacturing or a, an educational facility or workforce? I'm just curious as to how they came to determine that a brewery would be the best solution at this point.
Sure.
Maybe that's a question for the applicants. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant speak further on that point, but in most part, it's that they are already as a tenant in place with this project that is hoping to be the anchor for this pedestrian corridor that will be going through the, the project. And it is a tenant that's originally from the Rockaways and is currently based in Long Island City. So it's an intention to kind of bring them back to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramperstad.
Thank you, Holla, for that presentation. I'm gonna have a lot of questions on Wednesday, but if they can, applicant can please speak to the the responses from both the BP and the community board, and particularly with regards to the deed restriction for the hotel, whether or not do they have an operator for the hotel? And also, have they been in discussion, have any written agreement with MTA for increasing transportation, bus service, train service to that area?
I will have to let the applicant know and speak to the MTA point. I'm not aware if they've had any conversations with that.
Commissioner Bernie.
Actually, just to comment on Vice Chair Knuckles' point about the brewery, they've actually, as far as I know anyway, have been looking to get back to the Rockaways for quite a while. They just haven't been able to find a place. So it's really good that they now have this opportunity. And secondly, it's actually pretty good beer. I don't think they're gonna go out of business. It's pretty good stuff, so.
Talking as an expert?
Yeah, well, I've certainly drunk it many times, so it's, I can attest to its quality, so I can say. I'm hoping that when they come on Wednesday, there'll be somebody to speak to the actual layout of the plan sort of east of Thirty-eighth Street, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I don't see any real sense of place. It seems to be a very haphazard layout. There are some public streets and some private streets. The, the commercial hotel and brewery is closer to the, the dunes rather than to the back street, the rest of the neighborhood. There's a lot of stuff colored green and called open space, but it's not clear, is it private or public? So I find the layout very difficult to read, so hopefully on Wednesday, somebody can, can speak to it.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, we'll have the applicant team speak to it. But just also noting that it's currently just a conceptual plan, and it's not an approved site plan, and the actions, you know, right now are really just to the UDAP for the nature preserve, and specifically to the mixed-use district where the brewery will be cited.
Nonetheless, I think it important that the applicant be asked to address these concerns.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Delos.
So speaking to the, to the nature preserve, so is that an official designation? And, you know, what, what's the development team's role going to be in developing the nature preserve and in maintaining it? It'd be helpful to have some additional information on, on Wednesday about that.
Sure, yeah. And we'll have also representatives from the Parks Department who'll be able to speak to that relationship as well.
Okay, not seeing any other raised hands. We'll see this on Wednesday at the public hearing, and we are anticipating quite a number of speakers. This is likely to be a long hearing on this item.
Thank you.
Moving on to the eighth item on the agenda, it's a non-Eurol, non-Eurol referral of an authorization in Staten Island Community District Two. Our presenter is Roselle Dieter.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This project is located at thirty-five Pierceall Street. Next slide, please. This is a private application seeking an authorization to waive the requirement that in the R-three-X district, a two-family residence must be designed with at least seventy-five percent of one unit's floor area located above or below the other unit. The authorization would allow the units to be located side by side. Next slide, please. The project site is located in the South Beach neighborhood of Staten Island's Community District Two. Next slide, please. The surrounding area consists of R-three-X and R-three-one zoning districts, and C-one-one overlays are mapped at the Sand Lane and farther Capodanno Boulevard intersection. R-three-X and R-three-one districts permit low-density, single-family, two-family, and attached homes with a maximum FAR of point six. The existing area is characterized by two-to-three-story pitched roof, one-to-two-family detached, semi-detached, and attached homes. Nearby parks include Ocean Breeze Park, South Beach, and the FDR Boardwalk. The area is served by the S-fifty-two bus line along Olympia Boulevard. Next slide, please. The zoning lot is located within the one-hundred-year flood plain on the two thousand and fifteen preliminary flood insurance rate map. The South Beach wetlands, which are Department of Environmental Protection Blue Belt properties, are located to the south. The Blue Belt is a DEP program to use wetlands and streams for natural stormwater drainage. Next slide, please. The project site is located on the east side of Pierceall Street between Olympia Boulevard and Quincy Avenue. The site is located in an R-three-X district and is improved with a one-and-a-half-story residence and a detached garage. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing structures on the site to construct a new detached two-family home with a side-by-side arrangement. Proposed FAR is point five nine. The house would have two stories and an open cellar area. According to the applicant team, locating the living spaces above a visible cellar and garage is typical in a federal flood hazard zone. The applicant also proposes design elements that would help meet the findings of the authorization, which include that the development is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding area, and the design does not give the appearance of a semi-detached building. Next slide, please. For example, the home is proposed to have a pitched roof to give it the appearance of a one-family home. Next slide, please. The design also has one front door with entrance to the two units from the interior vestibule, and it has one garage door. Next slide, please. The applicant also submitted a drawing of the proposed street escape to illustrate how the proposed home indicated by the shaded building would be compatible with the scale and character of existing homes in the area. Next slide, please. In summary, this authorization is being sought to allow construction of side-by-side units upon meeting the findings. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Roselle. Commissioner Sorrell.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Roselle. I, I just wanna, obviously, we've seen, we've seen these types of applications before on Staten Island, a couple. We've seen in, I, I think we saw one in the Bronx some years ago. So they're not uncommon, but something that I've learned about this particular location, I just want to make sure, Roselle, that you are aware of this. At, at some point, and I don't know exactly the history, but there, there were two addresses that were issued for this property, and obviously, perhaps there was a different plan for it at another time. But the fact that there, this is now coming to us, there will be- But the fact that this is now coming to us, there will be one door with the two interior doors to ensure that it doesn't look semi-detached. I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware. I know that and was advised to go and to correct the issue with the addresses, so there isn't any confusion with ultimately two addresses on file for this property. Just from a public safety point of view, we wouldn't want to have that occur. So I just wanna, you know, I know this is going out to the community board. I'm not sure there would be a great deal of concern about the application itself, but do you want to just raise that for the record, that we're aware of it and that we just monitor the applicant's follow-up?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the applicant is aware that the question was raised about the potential to have, that they had two addresses, and they are working with the Borough President's Office to clear that up. And they have made revisions to our, to the plans that they submitted to show that it's only one address.
Oh, excellent, thank you, thank you for that, Roselle.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Not seeing other raised hands, we will refer this matter to the community board for 45 days.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roselle.
Okay, the ninth item on the agenda is a certification of a Udap designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn Community District Three. Our presenter is Josh Vogel. I'm also gonna note that Commissioner Ramperstad is recused on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be presenting the Bedford-Stuyvesant Central and North Udap. Next slide, please. This is an application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, for Udap designation, project approval, and disposition for eight vacant city-owned lots to facilitate the construction of four residential buildings with approximately 45 units of affordable homeownership housing. Next slide, please. Developments are located in two clusters in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood in Community District Three, Brooklyn. Next slide. For some orientation here, we're looking at Cluster One in the southeast portion of Community Board Three, which includes Development Site One, located on Chauncey Street between Malcolm X and Patchen Avenues. Jackie Robinson Park is located directly across the street to the south of Development Site One. The Breivort Houses are one block east, and the Fulton Park Houses, I'm sorry, and Fulton Park is a block west. The AC subway runs along Fulton Street with a station two blocks southwest. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is characterized by low and medium-density residential buildings and two-to-three-story row houses. There are also six-story multifamily residential buildings located southwest of Development Site One. Much of the surrounding area was contextually rezoned in 2007 as part of the Bedford-Stuyvesant South rezoning. Development Site One was rezoned from R5 to R6B, which allows for a residential FAR of two with a maximum base height of 40 feet after a setback. Commercial uses surrounding Development Site One are concentrated along Malcolm X Boulevard and Fulton Street. Both are wide commercial streets mapped with a C24 overlay, and are major thoroughfares located west and two blocks south of Development Site One, respectively. Both commercial strips are characterized by mixed-use buildings with a ground-floor commercial uses and residential above. The area is well-served by public transit. In addition to the AC subway on Fulton Street, the B46 and B27 buses run down Malcolm X Boulevard and Fulton Street, respectively. Next slide, please. Development Site One is located on the north side of Chauncey Street and has approximately 25 feet of frontage. The site consists of two vacant city-owned lots that are 130 feet deep, with a total lot area of approximately 3,287 square feet. Next slide. These photos taken over the summer show the vacant city-owned lots that are Development Site One. The surrounding block is residential in nature with two-to-four-story row houses. Next slide, please. The proposed development will be a 37-foot-tall, approximately 4,000, 5,463-square-foot residential building. At four stories, it will include approximately 700% affordable homeownership units with a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments, and it will include a rear yard that will be landscaped and accessible to residents. Next slide, please. Cluster Two is northwest of Cluster One and includes Development Sites Two, Three, and Four. Land uses here are generally the same as Cluster One with some additional mid-rise residential buildings. The G subway line runs through the center of Cluster One on Marcy Ave with a station on Myrtle, less than a block from the Cluster Two development sites. Just north of the development sites are the New York City Housing Authority Marcy and Tompkins Houses. Next slide, please. Development Sites Two and Three are located in a R7D C24 district on the south side of Myrtle Avenue, a wide street and major east-west corridor that has a mix of residential, mixed-use, and community facility buildings. This R7D C24 district is mapped with a voluntary inclusionary housing area, which permits a base FAR for residential uses of 4.2 and a maximum of 5.6 for developments complying with the VIH program. Quality Housing Bulk Regulations are mandatory in R7D districts with a base height of 60 to 85 feet before a setback and a maximum height of 100 feet or 105 feet with a qualifying ground floor. Development Site Four is located within a R6B zoning district on the north side of Vernon Avenue, a narrow street between Marcy and Tompkins Avenues. R6B districts allow for residential FAR of two with a maximum base height of 40 feet after a setback. Land uses surrounding Cluster Two include a mix of uses: residential, commercial, industrial, manufacturing, open space, vacant land, community, and institutional facilities. The area surrounding Cluster Two is characterized by low and medium-density residential buildings with a mix of two-to-three-story row houses. There are also five- and six-story multifamily residential buildings with ground-floor commercial uses along the south side of Myrtle Avenue. Institutional and public facility uses in the surrounding area include a building occupied by the Department of Health, schools, and several religious institutions. Open space in the surrounding area includes the Willoughby Playground, located on the south side of Vernon Avenue across from Development Site Four, Marcy Playground, located on the north side of Myrtle Avenue across from Development Site Two, and the Vernon Community Garden, located on the south side of Vernon Avenue between Nostrand and Marcy Avenues. The Myrtle-Willoughby Avenues G Subway Station is located at the corner of Marcy and Myrtle Avenues. Local bus service includes the B44 bus, which travels along Nostrand Avenue connecting Williamsburg and Sheepshead Bay, and the B54 bus, which travels along Myrtle Avenue connecting downtown Brooklyn and Ridgewood. Next slide, please. So here we're looking at Development Site Two, which is located on the south side of Myrtle Avenue, just east of Nostrand, with approximately 25 feet of frontage. Development Site Two consists of one vacant city-owned lot, which has a lot area of approximately 2,500 square feet. Next slide. The proposed development will be improved with a six-story, approximately 10,000-square-foot mixed-use building that will contain approximately 8,383 square feet of residential floor area and approximately 1,627 square feet of commercial floor area. The proposed building will include approximately 10, 10 homeownership units with a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments. Amenities in the building will include a tenant's storage room, a laundry room located in the building cellar, and a recreational rooftop accessible to residents. Next slide, please. The next site, Development Site Three, is located on the south side of Myrtle Avenue between Marcy and Tompkins Avenues and has approximately 25 feet of frontage along Myrtle Avenue. Development Site Three consists of one vacant city-owned lot, which has a lot area of approximately 2,500 square feet. Next slide. Development Site Three will be developed with a six-story, approximately 10,287-square-foot mixed-use building. The proposed building will include approximately 10 affordable homeownership apartments with a mix of one- and two-bedroom units and ground-floor commercial. Amenities in the building will include a tenant's storage room, a laundry room located in the building cellar, and a recreational rooftop. Next slide. Development Site Four is located on the north side of Vernon Avenue between Marcy and Tompkins Avenues and has approximately 80 feet of frontage along Vernon Avenue. The site consists of four vacant city-owned lots and has a lot area of approximately 8,000 square feet. The Udap was approved for two four-story buildings with approximately 16 condominium units in 2006, but never developed. Next slide. Site Four will be developed with a five-story, approximately 16,000-square-foot residential building. The building will set back approximately 10 feet from the lot line, allowing for landscaping at the front of the building. The proposed building will have a base height of approximately 40 feet before setting back approximately 20 feet to rise to a total building height of approximately 50 feet. The proposed development will include approximately 18 affordable homeownership units with a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. Amenities in the building will include a tenant's storage room, a laundry room, bike storage, and a rear yard. A zoning override was also obtained for this development to waive the nine parking spaces that would otherwise be required. Next slide, please. And finally, I'd like to briefly share progress that we made with HPD improving the design of these buildings, as we're excited to share the final product. These sites are on historic brownstone Brooklyn blocks, and it was important to us that we make sure the buildings are contextual and fit with the surrounding urban fabric. So as we see here on the left, 722 and 890 Myrtle were originally proposed as nearly identical buildings despite being only a block apart. So HPD and the project team were really responsive to our feedback to incorporate some variation between the two, as seen on the right. Next slide. And here for 121 Vernon, DCP and HPD worked together to ensure that the proposed development would respond to the surrounding brownstones with sidewalk fencing, a cornice line, and vertical delineation. We also introduced privacy measures for the ground-floor units. Next slide. In summary, this is an application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development for Udap designation, project approval, and disposition for eight vacant city-owned lots to facilitate the construction of four residential buildings with approximately 45 units of affordable homeownership housing. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I just wanted to note that the department very much shares the Commission's interest in good urban design, and so we thought that we would show you a little bit of our homework on this one to give a sense of how our borough offices or urban design teams work with applicants so that, to improve the quality of what comes before the Commission. And with that, I'll open it up to questions, starting with Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, yeah, I do want to commend the staff. I think definitely made a lot of progress, and I thought the finished product is exactly what we need to be looking for, which is good, solid, contextual buildings that fit into the neighborhood very well, and I compliment you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that, especially with Development Site Four, that's a huge improvement. I have questions about Development Sites Two and Three. Are there lot-line windows in the adjacent buildings?
There are, and we are in the, we're trying to figure out what exactly those windows are for, if it's livable space or if it's just, you know, corridors, so we can.
Whether they're legal or not, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because the building adjacent to Development Site Two looks as if it was put up quite recently, so it would be surprising for it to have lot-line windows. But anyway, I'm glad you're looking into that, because no matter, no matter the legal status of those windows, it's gonna be a drag for the folks living in those buildings to have buildings go up, pop, get them.
Exactly, yeah, so we'll report back.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. This is affordable homeownership, Josh, so stated. So what are the AMI bans contemplated in this case?
So the AMIs and qualifying incomes have not yet been finalized, but per the open-door term sheet, the units will be affordable to households earning between 80 and 130% AMI. But the project team will provide the exact AMIs and qualifying incomes at the CPC hearing.
Thank you.
Which is a ways down the road, because this is here for certification.
Yeah, they're still working on it.
So I'm not seeing any other hands raised, this project is certified.
Thanks, Josh. The 10th item on our agenda is a pre-here review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Seven. Our presenter is Amy Chin, and Commissioner Deloos is recused on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by 737 Fourth Avenue LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of a block from an M11D district to an R8A C24 district and map the area as a part of the Special Enhanced Commercial District EC1 and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area and to include the project area within the EC1 district. These actions would facilitate a 14-story mixed-use development with ground-floor commercial use and a total of 142 residential units, approximately 36 of which would be designated permanently affordable. Next slide, please. The project area is located in the South Park Slope neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Seven. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential uses to the north and east, a mix of industrial, commercial, and community facilities to the west and south. We can see that the uses along Fourth Avenue here are quite mixed. The surrounding area is mapped M12D to the north and west, M11D to the south, R8A C24 to the northeast, and R6A to the east. M11D and M12D are manufacturing districts that permit manufacturing, commercial, and community facility uses. New residential use is permitted by a CPC authorization. M11D districts have a maximum FAR of one for commercial and manufacturing uses, 2.4 for community facility uses, and 1.65 for residential uses. Buildings have a maximum front wall height of 30 feet and are subject to a sky-exposure plane with no maximum height. The M11D and M12D districts were created to respond to the mixed-use character of neighborhoods such as this one, where there is a mix of existing manufacturing and residential uses, while a CPC authorization allows for some flexibility within these districts for residential development and enlargements. R8A and R6A are medium-density contextual residential districts. The Special Enhanced Commercial District, the EC1, is mapped immediately north of the project area along Fourth Avenue. The residential areas northeast and southwest of the project area have been contextually rezoned in 2005 and 2009 as part of the South Park Slope and Sunset Park rezonings. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential uses to the north and east, and industrial, commercial, and community facility uses to the west and south. Residential buildings are characterized by three-to-six-story apartment buildings, while community facility uses are characterized by churches and schools of up to four stories. Greenwood Cemetery is located one block east of the project area, and the southwest Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone is located west of Third Avenue. The project area is well-served by public transit with access to the R subway line at Fourth Avenue and 25th Street directly southwest of the project area. Additionally, the B63 bus runs north-south along Fifth Avenue, while the B37 bus runs north-south along Third Avenue. Next slide, please. Currently, the project area is occupied by a one-story commercial building on Lot 7 and a one-story commercial building on Lot 1, which we can see in the foreground here, containing a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin-Robbins with an accessory surface parking lot. There are three curb cuts along the site, one on 25th Street and two on Fourth Avenue. Next slide, please. Here are some additional views of the project area along 25th Street. Next slide, please. And here are some views along Fourth Avenue. So the top row is Fourth Avenue looking north, while the bottom row is looking south. The middle photos show buildings directly north and south of the project area, while the far-right photos show the corners diagonal to the project area. In particular, in the last photo on the bottom left, sorry, the bottom right, is looking southwest of the project area where we can see a 10-story hotel. Next slide, please. So the applicant proposes to develop a 14-story mixed-use building with approximately 108,000 square feet of floor area to an FAR of 7.2. There will be approximately 100,000 square feet of residential use and 9,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial use. The proposed development contains approximately 142 dwelling units, of which 36 will be designated permanently affordable under option one of the mandatory inclusionary housing program. Next slide, please. The building has a maximum base height of 105 feet and rises to a maximum building height of approximately 145 feet after a 10-foot setback at the 11th floor. after a 10-foot setback at the 11th floor. The proposed development would include approximately 52 accessory off-street parking spaces in the cellar accessible by 12-foot curb cut along 25th Street and 78 accessory bicycle storage spaces on the ground floor. Next slide, please. Additionally, uh, the applicant has worked with the MTA to provide an elevator easement along Fourth Avenue on the ground floor and cellar portions of the building in order to facilitate accessibility to, uh, the 25th Street station of the R-line. You can see the easement in these plans outlined in blue. Uh, next slide, please. Here's just another view looking north of the proposed building. Next slide, please. So to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to rezone an M11D district to an R8A C24 district and to map the special enhanced commercial district over the project area and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area with options one and two and to include the project area within the EC1 district. Next slide, please. The proposed zoning map amendment would change the project area from an M11D district to an R8A C24 district. R8A is a residential district which allows a maximum FAR of 7.2 for residential use when mapped within an MIH area, a maximum base height of 105 feet and a maximum building height of 145 feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is generally required for 40% of the non-income restricted housing units. C24 is a commercial overlay that permits a maximum FAR of two for commercial uses. Additionally, the special enhanced commercial district EC1 would be extended over the project area. The EC1 district promotes a mix of commercial and community facility uses on the ground floor with transparency requirements and limitations on parking and curb cuts that enhance the pedestrian environment and create an active streetscape that better serves the growing residential population. New developments must provide windows on the ground floor facing Fourth Avenue and may not locate residences or parking on the ground floor within 30 feet of Fourth Avenue. At least 50% of the frontage must be occupied by retail and service uses as defined for the special district, and lobbies are limited to a maximum width of 25 feet. Next slide, please. The applicant seeks two zoning text amendments, one to appendix F to designate the project area as an MIH area with options one and two. The applicant intends to select MIH, uh, option one for this project. The second zoning text amendment would include the project area within the EC1 district. Next slide, please. Uh, Community Board 7 held a public hearing on November 12th, 2020, and on November 18th voted to approve this application with the following conditions. On MIH, the board would like the applicant to first provide deeper affordability for the MIH units. Second, start outreach to CB7 residents for applicant, uh, application readiness for the housing lottery in all four primary languages of the district. And third, to provide larger units for family comprising of two or three bedrooms in the MIH count. The board would like the developer to make a good faith commitment to hire minority and women-owned businesses for the construction, supply, and maintenance operations of the building with preference for local businesses within CB7. The board would like the developer to commit to using universal and inclusive design principles and ensure full accessibility and incorporate sustainable design practices. The board would like the developer to commit to leasing its ground floor retail space to neighborhood retail uses. The board would like the developer to commit in writing that the development would not turn into homeless shelter. Uh, next slide, please. And further, the board would like the department to consider a racial and ethnic impact study and assist in land use, uh, in the land use committee's efforts to begin a study for an affordable housing plan in CB7. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, oh, so, sorry. Uh, so, uh, the Borough President's recommendations still have not been submitted yet. We can go on to the next slide. During the August 17, uh, review session, there were a few questions from Commissioners about the appropriateness of the density and the EC1 district that we would like to address today. Um, with respect to the density, Fourth Avenue is 120-foot-wide major transit corridor in Brooklyn. Additionally, the project area is directly on top of the 25th Street station on the R-line, um, and the R8A district proposed here would be an extension of the existing R8A C24 district directly to the north. Moreover, the 2005 and 2009 contextual rezonings, while allowing for modest increases in FAR along a few corridors such as Fourth Avenue, have partly limited development potential in the neighborhood. We took a look at the new developments since two, uh, since the 2005 Parks, South Park Slope rezoning, uh, which we have shown here in this map in orange. Uh, some of these new developments fall within the voluntary inclusionary housing areas, uh, in blue, uh, with only one development participating in the VIH program at the corner of 19th Street and Fourth Avenue. Regarding the EC1 district, the intention of the special district is to have active ground floor uses along Fourth Avenue to promote and maintain a lively and engaging pedestrian experience. The special district allows for a vibrant mix of commercial and community facility uses with transparency requirements and limits on curb cuts and parking, which all come together to activate the sidewalk. Given the proximity to subway and the fact that Fourth Avenue is one of the main commercial corridors in the neighborhood, the department believes that the special district is appropriate here, too. I am happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Amy. Commissioner Dweck.
Uh, thank you. Do, I note that the developer also owns the corner on 24th Street. Do we know what his plans are for that? Do their plans are for that?
Um, yeah, so there are a couple of longer-term leases there, and so there is, there are no plans currently to redevelop the site.
And you, how long the leases go out? Do we have an idea?
I'm not sure, but I can, uh, get back to you on that.
Thank you.
And do we expect the developer at the public hearing on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, so an opportunity to ask directly. Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Right. The 11th item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 10. Our presenter is Josh Vogel.
Sorry about that. I was having trouble unmuting. Uh, next slide, please. This is an application by Bay Ridge Realty for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a nine-story mixed-use building. It will contain 41 dwelling units and 9,300 square feet of ground floor commercial. The application was certified on September 14th, and the public hearing will be held on January 6th. Next slide, please. The project is located at 9114 Fifth Avenue, corner of 92nd Street, in the Bay Ridge neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 10. Next slide, please. The project area is roughly bounded by 91st Street to the north, Fifth Avenue to the east, 92nd Street to the south, and Fourth Avenue to the west. Fifth Avenue is a major retail corridor largely occupied by local businesses with residential above. To the west, the R subway line runs along Fourth Avenue, the primary transit corridor in the neighborhood. The closest station is a block and a half away at 93rd and 4th. Next slide. The project area lies within a C82 commercial district in the special Bay Ridge district. C82 districts have a maximum commercial FAR of two. Under the special Bay Ridge district, community facilities cannot exceed three FAR, and there is a maximum base height of 60 feet and a maximum building height of 70 feet after a setback. The surrounding area is predominantly commercial and mixed-use, characterized by a range of building types, one to seven stories tall. The commercial uses include office buildings, restaurants, and auto-oriented uses. Residential and community facility uses primarily occupy the south-side streets, west of Fourth Avenue and east of Fifth Avenue. Next slide. The project area consists of 12 tax lots fronting Fifth Avenue and 92nd Street outlined in orange. Next slide. The development site includes two of these lots, lots 23 and 31, outlined in red, totaling 9,851 square feet. Next slide. This diagram shows the 12 tax lots within the project area. The proposed development is outlined in red and owned by the applicant. Lot 31 is vacant, a previously used car lot. Lot 23 is a parking lot on a month-to-month lease for the adjacent business to the north on Lot 21, a local window business. The table shows the existing conditions of the other tax lots in the project area. Next slide. And for some context, photo one on the left is a mid-block view on 92nd Street of Lot 31 of the development site. And photo two shows Lot 23 of the development site fronting Fifth Avenue. Next slide, please. Here, photo three shows the northeast corner of Fifth Avenue and 92nd Street. The building on the corner is a restaurant with residential above. Photo four looks south down Fifth Avenue from 91st Street towards the Verrazano Bridge. The building seen on the right of development sites is seen on the right with the 70-foot-tall PS104 on the left. Next slide, please. Here, photo five looks east down 92nd Street from Fourth Avenue. The development site is mid-block on the left. Photo six looks south down Fourth Avenue from 92nd Street. The large seven-story building on the left facing the development site is 9201 Fourth Avenue in 82-foot-tall commercial and community facility building constructed 1965 before the special Bay Ridge district was established and with an FAR of 4.4. On the right is one of the many six-story apartment buildings along Fourth Avenue constructed in the 1920s with an FAR of 5.2. Next slide, please. The proposed development would consist of a nine-story residential building with commercial on the ground floor and a total area of 45,238 square feet, approximately 4.6 FAR. The building has a total height of 95 feet after a setback at 75 feet. The one-story commercial component fronting 92nd Street is 13 feet in height. The applicant is still in discussion with the council member in determining which MIH option to pursue, either options one or two. Next slide, please. The nine-story residential building fronts on Fifth Avenue with the one-story commercial space fronting on 92nd Street. The applicant is currently proposing the commercial space as one unit. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed actions, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from a C82 Special Bay Ridge District to an R7A C24 Special Bay Ridge District. R7A districts allow a maximum FAR of 4.6 and a maximum height of 95 feet or nine stories. C24 districts are commercial overlays that permit a maximum FAR of two in our seven districts. Next slide, please. In addition, a zoning text amendment is being proposed to establish an MIH area coterminous with the proposed rezoning area. Next slide, please. In summary, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use building that would contain 41 residential units with 9,300 square feet of ground floor commercial space. Next slide, please. On November 19th, Community Board 10 voted to approve the application with 35 in favor, three against, and one recusal. However, included in the recommendation was a note that CB10 requested the number of lots be reduced in the project area, removing lots 32, 33, and 34 on 92nd Street due to the narrowness of the street, saying the proposed district would be inappropriate for this part of the block. Next slide, please. On November 30th, the Borough President held a remote hearing on the application. On December 30th, the BP's office issued a recommendation to approve with modifications. These modifications included reducing the proposed district along 92nd Street, mirroring the community board's request to remove lots 32, 33, and 34. The modifications also included providing a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, having a housing nonprofit administer the affordable housing lottery with community outreach, and setting aside a purse, a portion of the commercial space for cultural, nonprofit, or locally-based immigrant-owned businesses. Next slide, please. And additionally, to incorporate resiliency and sustainability measures, coordinate with other city agencies on rain gardens to retain Brooklyn-based contractors, especially those that are local and minority and women-owned business enterprises, and for DOT to conduct a traffic study along 92nd Street to determine the appropriateness of the traffic safety measures. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. So I'm assuming that the, Joshua, I'm assuming the rationale for, uh, going past 125 feet on 92nd Street is to bring into conformance the existing properties. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're legally non-conforming, all, uh, independent owners. And, and it's a block from the subway. The adjacent buildings are similar to the R7A, um, density. So that's the rationale to include it.
So two questions. One, one, why wouldn't we split it after 100, or transition it down after 125 feet to an R6B, which wouldn't incent the demolition of those buildings? And it would still suffice to get the project developed. And then another question on the other side, why are we, uh, not extending the R7A all the way down Fifth Avenue to 91st Street to the other corner? Planning rationale, I think that would just make more sense.
Yeah, so those are two great questions. I do not have the answer to them. I can, uh, check with the applicant and have them, um, report back on Wednesday.
Thank you.
I think it would also be helpful to have a department position in the post-hearing follow-up since frequently we work with applicants when we believe that different boundaries are appropriate.
Noted.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will see this on our jam-packed public hearing schedule for Wednesday.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Uh, the 12th item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification to the 1501, 1555 60th Street rezoning, and Connie Chan is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This application for a zoning map amendment, uh, to change an M11 district to an R7A C24 district and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 12 was approved by the City Planning Commission on November 18th. Next slide. These actions would facilitate three mixed-use buildings containing 102 residential units and approximately 32,000 square feet of commercial space. On December 16, City Council voted to approve the proposed actions with modifications. Next slide. The boundaries of the zoning map amendment were reduced in size as shown here. On the left is a diagram of the original boundary approved by the commission, which is outlined in the black dotted line. Uh, this boundary extended, uh, to 15th Avenue along the northwest border. And on the right is a diagram showing the modified boundary, which occupies mid-block portions of two blocks, uh, on the north and south sides of 60th Street, and the boundary no longer extends, uh, to 15th Avenue. Next slide. City Council also modified the proposed text amendment to appendix F of the zoning resolution so that the newly proposed mandatory inclusionary housing area is coterminous with the modified rezoning boundary. The agency has determined that these modifications are within scope and raise no land use or environmental issues requiring further review. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'd actually like to make a few comments before turning it over to the commission. I'll note that there was a strong land use rationale for the original boundaries, which covered portions of two blocks along 60th Street between 15th Avenue and the Long Island Railroad right-of-way. The land use rationales included the proximity to multiple subway lines, the location on two blocks that were bounded by wide streets, 60th Street, 15th Avenue, 16th Avenue. There's also the fact that 60th Street is a major east-west corridor along one of the busiest bus routes in Brooklyn. There's also the fact that buildings in the surrounding area, both residential and commercial, have similar densities as the proposed rezoning. While the development site comprised only a portion of the rezoning area, when the department and then the commission looked at the application, we were comfortable that it was part of a larger rezoning area that aligns with the commission's and the department's approach to land use. Um, I want to be clear that the changes proposed by the city council are within scope, but we look at the reduction in the rezoning area as resulting in a zoning map that just is not nearly as sound as what we had proposed. We end up with a situation where the mid-blocks are going to be permitted a higher density, while 15th Avenue, a wide street, is limited to a lower density. The other thing that is going to happen is that we will now have a zoning map with two isolated islands of R7A C24, the old zoning district. with two isolated islands of R-7A C-24, the old zoning district, and kind of hard to explain why these two islands remain. The other reason we think this is unfortunate is because it runs counter to discussions and specific requests to city planning by Community Board 12. This is a community board that has repeatedly highlighted that there are strains on the existing housing supply and that this is an ongoing neighborhood issue. As you know, each year, each community board submits a community district statement of needs, and over the years, CB12 has continued to highlight the need for new housing development. The community board has also asked us to, they've given us specific requests to rezone the commercial areas along 60th Street to facilitate new housing opportunities to accommodate the housing needs of growing families. And it's the fact, against this backdrop, that the department chose to support this private application. Hearing now that the community board is expressing concerns about building height and density, it really calls into question for the department whether it is a good use of the department's time to undertake the type of future study for rezoning that would facilitate new housing along this corridor. So again, I have to emphasize, it is within scope, but we think that particularly in this community, which has such a crying need for housing, it is hard to feel comfortable with the portions of the site being cut out. And I now toss it over to the commissioners. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, thank you, Chair, for your observations. I would just say that I trust that you will convey those sentiments to city council in transmitting what is otherwise, I assume, our non-opposition to what they've determined here.
It's not even an opposition. It's a determination of whether it's within scope.
Yeah.
No, thank you. Commissioner Vellows.
I appreciate your comments, Chair. I would, and I, you know, I sense a little bit of frustration in your voice as you share what you're sharing. And, you know, I would just say that, you know, the closer in the neighborhood you having to weigh the pros and cons of these things, you know, where the trade-offs are having to be weighed, the more likely compromise is likely to happen. That, you know, how is it that on the one hand, the community says it needs more housing and more affordable housing? On the other hand, says it doesn't want density? I think those kinds of inconsistencies are actually quite common in the community dialogue, and I would just hope that it wouldn't dissuade the department from engaging in those conversations because it's in that push and pull that greater understanding can happen and people's positions can shift.
Very much appreciated. We continue to engage with communities. It really is an issue of prioritizing the use of our resources. And this clearly was one where we saw the opportunity to follow through on what the community had asked us for, which is why you sense the frustration. Very perceptive. Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, you know, just on the same theme, and I'm just looking at the letter that was drafted for your signature, Chair, and it says, "In accordance with Section 197D, blah, 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 the commission has determined that the city council's proposed modifications raise no land use or environmental issues requiring further review." Well, that statement is just not true. So I don't know whether it's the language or whatever, but you can't expect the members of this commission to sign off on that language because for all the reasons that you've just pined, it's not true.
I would ask, as Susan Ammon is not available today, if folks from council's office can let us know if we can change the language because the determination is that it is within scope, and it clearly is within the scope of the authority. And again, Anita, are you on the call?
Yeah. So it's really a question of the commission has the authority to ignore the land use and environmental issues that we might raise. I mean, that's really what it is.
It's within, it's a legal determination as to whether the actions that the council has taken are assumed within what the commission approved. So it doesn't go to the wisdom of their changes.
But that's questionable, then. If they're saying that what the modifications are within, subsumed within what was approved, I would disagree with that also.
On that, I would have to disagree with you, Commissioner. That is a determination that is made by our council as to whether it fits within the boundaries. And we have years of precedent that if there is a rezoning area, that the council is able to restrict the rezoning areas. Here, it's pulling back the boundaries. In other instances, they've actually created donut holes in the middle of a rezoning area. And again, under the allocation of powers under the charter, the council does have that ability.
So it becomes a charter revision issue ultimately, I suppose.
Right. And a prerogative that the council guards closely, that they have the ability to look at issues beyond land use, provided that it is within scope.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I'm just wondering, is the upshot here that the boundaries are now essentially the boundaries of the proposed development site? Do we have a spot zoning here?
I do not believe it is a spot zoning. It is a significant enough area to be rezoned. One could, I don't think it would be subject to challenge as spot zoning.
Okay, but it is coterminous with the proposed development boundaries now?
Connie, if you could confirm, I believe so.
Sure. There are, the reduced boundary includes the three proposed development sites as well as one lot, which is not part of the proposed development site.
That little lot that was in the middle.
That was in between the two buildings on the north side.
But, so the outer boundaries are either side of the north-south, or although it's all confusing out there, but the boundaries on either end.
The proposed development site as well as the Long Island Railroad right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're fortunate that we don't have the donut hole in the middle, which would have made even less land use rationale. So against this unfelicitous background, I would ask for a sent by eyes to send a letter to the city council noting that this is within scope. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, then I'll abstain.
Thank you. Others? I?
I.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For moving on to future votes, we have prepared reports for consideration, reports for consideration on January 6, 2021, for the 16th Avenue rezoning. The Angel Guardian Home Landmark Designation, 4211 Ninth Street, IBIA. If there are any further questions on those or have comments on the draft reports that were sent to you, please let us know. And then on January 20, 2021, a vote will be scheduled on the St. Michael's Park Elimination Minor Modification. There were materials in your package on this. And so I'm just, if there are any further questions on that, oh, I see a hand raised.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, so I had a hard time making sense of the materials that were in there. Is the gist here is that there's just an easement that's being retained?
It's a, it's actually, part of the parkland is being retained as parkland, and it will be, I think, used by DEP.
Okay.
Probably, you know, for one of their, you know, infrastructure things.
Okay. Thank you.
Bernie has his hand up?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, Ryan, just one thing. On the Cortelia Road rezoning, we'd had a conversation with the proposer about the ninth floor, and he said that they were going to modify it and pull it back and resubmit it, but it's exactly the same image as they presented.
So we have a, we have that on post-hearing, and Amy, I think, has a presentation on this. So we'll be discussing it just in like moments.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so moving on to post-hearing follow-up, I'll read the first two here. The DSNY Queen's Seven Parking Lot, if there's any further questions on that for staff. Can get back to you, not seeing any. And then 4201 28th Avenue rezoning. Commissioner Levin has her hand up.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
We asked at the hearing if the applicant that we would be willing to remove MIH Option 2, which has been one of the conditions of the community board, they said they would. Has that, is that now part of the, has the application been modified? Are we only considering Option 1 here?
So we are, my understanding is the Queen's Office has reached out to the council member to sort of coordinate this, since the council tends to have a sort of a view on these things. And we, because we don't want to, you know, have them take something out and then have the council put it back in, or if the council member was like, you know, actually, this is a change that I feel, you know, I want to make. That may also be the case. So we're reaching out and coordinating.
Yeah. No, look, I appreciate that particularly the latter point is part of our weird kabuki dance that we do here. But I think a number of us as commissioners will occasionally have very strong feelings that these kinds of changes are appropriate. And it really bothers me that our hands get tied by this political necessity to give the council member credit for something that is manifestly appropriate for us to do.
I would note that when it comes to the different MIH options, that those are all permissible and that I think it is very useful for the commission to state its preference. We can in the reports assure that there is the commission leaning into what we think is appropriate. But again, understanding that these are discussions that we have in each instance with the council members as well.
Yeah, but we're also, I appreciate that. And it never made sense to me that the MIH text was set up the way it was that put this entirely in the hands of the council member. We have an obligation to be responsive to local communities as well. So I do hope that whatever happens here, that our report can make it very clear that there was a discussion about this at the public hearing, that the commission heard what the community board wished to have happen here and that several commissioners, including myself most specifically, would like to see that change made.
Glad to include that in the report. It's a reflection of what happened.
Commissioner Marine's hand is up?
Yes, Commissioner Murray.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I support Anna State, and I happen to agree, you know, we do hard work, we do a lot of work. I understand that being a council member does also have its constituents that he needs to respond to, but there's a lot of work that goes on with us that I think should be a little bit more, taken with a little bit more consideration.
And I would always welcome commissioners as they review the reports to make suggestions. But again, on this, we will make sure that the draft report that you receive reflects this.
Okay. And then, yeah. For 1620 Cortelia Road rezoning, I believe Amy, you have a presentation on this to discuss?
Yes, I do. Give me one second. Just have to move some stuff around. Okay, so, hi again. At the public hearing, the commission heard concerns from members of the community on the height of this project. So we wanted to talk through the proposed zoning and respond to some of the questions raised. Next slide, please. So just situating ourselves within the neighborhood, the project area is on the north end of the block fronting on Cortelia Road, an 80-foot-wide street that serves as an active commercial corridor in Ditmas Park. The development is a part of a stretch of dense apartment buildings between Cortelia and Dorchester Roads that were developed between 1920s and 1960s. To the north of Cortelia and south of Dorchester are traditional Victorian-style homes. The blocks between Cortelia and Dorchester Roads, east of the rezoning area, were rezoned to R-6A and R-7A in 2009 as part of the wider Flatbush rezoning, and voluntary inclusionary housing areas were mapped within some of the R-7A areas that were previously R-6 districts. However, the four-to-eight-story multifamily apartment buildings that we see here predate this rezoning. The project area is less than a block away from the Cortelia Road Station on the Q line. And additionally, several bus lines run along Cortelia Road, including the B-103, BM-1, 2, 3, and 4 buses. Next slide, please. We want to remind the commission of the site's proximity to the subway. So zooming in, we see that the site is less than a block away from the subway station, highlighting the appropriateness of the additional density at this location. For some context, R-7D is a district specifically created for commercial and transit corridors such as Fulton Street and Bed-Stuy, which is an 80-foot-wide street. Cortelia Road here is similarly 80 feet wide. We can also see that the stretch of dense apartment buildings between Cortelia and Dorchester here in the back. These apartment buildings have FARs ranging from 3.6 to 4.5. Next slide, please. A few commissioners asked about the 2009 Flatbush contextual rezoning, which mapped R-6A districts along Cortelia west of the project area and R-7A south and east of the project area, as well as further north, and mapped voluntary inclusionary housing areas over the R-7A areas that were R-6 before. To this end, we wanted to take a look at the new developments over the last 10 years in the immediate area since that rezoning. So here's that view of the surrounding areas. In green are highlighted, like, all the new developments in the area. In total, there have been five new developments in the last 10 years. Four of those developments are market rate. Two of those that are market rate were in VIH areas, which are shown in blue, but they did not participate in the program. Only one development, the one currently under construction at 1921 Cortelia Road. If you follow the second bubble, counting from the top, that one contains affordable housing. This is the former church site noted in some of the testimonies that we heard at the public hearing. Next slide, please. At pre-hearing, there were also, there was also a question about other MIH mapping in CD14. This project would be the fourth to map MIH in CD14. The three previous projects are Caton Flats, which is an EDC project nearing completion at Caton and Flatbush, northeast of the project area. 1640 Flatbush Avenue is a private project in pre-development currently. It's southeast of the project area. And finally, Caton Park Nursing Home, which is north of the project area, is in addition to an existing nursing home that involved an upzoning. Next slide, please. The Flatbush rezoning was intended to protect the character of the Victorian homes in the area as well as map contextual zoning districts in denser parts of the neighborhood, such as along Flatbush and here along Cortelia and Dorchester. So over the past few decades, the demand for many Victorian-style homes has substantially increased with recent listings that sell upwards of $2 to $3 million. Next slide, please. And here you can see some of the recent listings in the neighborhood of these very beautiful Victorian homes. Next slide, please. In addition to these Victorian-style homes, the neighborhood is also home to dense apartment buildings along various stretches, such as along Flatbush and here between Cortelia and Dorchester Roads. Many of these apartment buildings contain rent-regulated housing that are a source of affordable housing to moderate and lower-income families. So here are some views of those existing multifamily apartment buildings between Cortelia and Dorchester Roads. Next slide, please. We also took a look at some of the available apartments for rent in these buildings. We can see that these apartments provide some variety and can cater to households with different incomes. Department staff believes that MIH Department staff believes that MIH is a valuable tool to ensure and reinforce this diversity of housing for future populations. Next slide, please. The commission also asked about as of right development on the site. The department wants to note that as of right development here wouldn't generate any affordable housing as it's outside of the VIH areas. In the next few slides, we'll take a look at the massings and envelopes of each district. The following massings and calculations assume that 10,000 square feet of the ground floor will be non-residential, which is in keeping with the proposal. However, except for the proposed R7D district, there is no requirement for non-residential ground floor use here. Next slide, please. So this is a massing under the current R6A zoning. The blue is the building envelope and the massing itself at its full FAR is inside that blue box. Since this is outside an inclusionary housing area, the base and building heights are limited to 65 feet and 75 feet respectively, with an FAR of three. This would produce approximately 40 dwelling units with no affordable units. Next slide, please. So this is a massing under R7A. Again, the envelope is in blue. There's a maximum base height of 75 feet and a maximum building height of 95 feet and a maximum FAR of 4.6. Under R7A, there would be approximately 68 dwelling units, 17 of which would be MIH. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is the massing under R7D. Buildings have a permitted base height of 95 feet and building height of 115 feet. R7D districts have a total FAR of 5.6, which would produce approximately 85 dwelling units, 21 of which would be MIH. The department believes this height and density are appropriate for this site, given its location on the short end of the block, its frontage on an 80 foot wide street and which is an active commercial corridor, and its close proximity to transit. Next slide, please. We want to remind the commission about the intent of the R7D district. R7D is a district that was created for commercial and transit corridors, such as Fulton Street and Bed-Stuy, which is also an 80 foot wide street. So here's an example of new development under R7D zoning at Fulton Albany, outlined in orange here. So the building, so the built outcome for R7D along Cortelia would be similar to what you see here. Next slide, please. We'll end here with this comparison table between the three districts. We just want to remind the commission that an as of right development would not contain any inclusionary housing. Also important to note here is that unlike R7D, R6A and R7A do not require non-residential use on the ground floor. R7D, when paired with C24, triggers a non-residential requirement to a depth of 30 feet that ensures active ground floor uses. Many community members expressed at the public hearing that the Key Foods here is a valuable asset to the neighborhood and having the non-residential ground floor requirement would help ensure that the grocery store remains here. Next slide, please. The applicant also shared a response letter this morning that I will be sharing with all of you after this review session. The letter touches on a number of things and includes a revised massing with the corner dormer removed. So what you see here is the old massing, but that dormer that you see on the corner of the building isn't in the new isn't in the new render. It also includes proposed construction phasing to maintain supermarket operations. And it includes a letter from the operator of the laundromat that's currently on the site, expressing that the applicant has has expressed intent to help them relocate their business within the surrounding area. I am happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Amy. Questions, vice chair Knuckles?
Can you hear me? I just lost.
Yes.
My video. No, I just wanted to say removal of the dormer, good move.
And I assume Commissioner Bernie agrees.
I do. It would be nice to see what it looks like now. They didn't give you a rendering yet, though.
Amy, did they give us a rendering or?
Yes, they did. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So you will be receiving the the revised rendering later today.
Okay, well done.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, so this is one that really grabbed my attention. You know, I had concerns about the proposed R7D in in the context of the neighborhood when this was certified. I think we had a good discussion about it at certification and the department's position about the appropriateness of the R7D was articulated then. I wasn't totally persuaded, but I'm always open to the intelligence and wisdom and good professional expertise of the department. But then it was really striking to me that we heard at the public hearing, by my count, 26 speakers in opposition and none in favor, except perhaps for the community board, which voted in favor. But if you look at all of their conditions lined up here, they really aren't very keen on their 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 conditions are intended to push and pull this in a direction that would make it acceptable to them, but they are none of them conditions that we can do anything about in this rezoning. So what I did with my holiday vacation was to go out to Cortelia Road and take a look, walk up and down, wander around. What a great neighborhood. I wish I discovered it earlier. And it was it is striking to me how strong the neighborhood character, the neighborhood context is there in exactly the way that Amy just outlined for us. And I realized that the Flushing rezoning in 2009 was the kind of contextual rezoning that we did a lot of in those days, which was to tailor the zoning of a of an area to the neighborhood context. And the purpose there was to preserve the character of the neighborhood and prevent future out of scale development. Because there weren't any height limits under the R6 and the R71. And oh, by the way, to preserve incentives for affordable housing along certain corridors that are well served by transit. So that was the policy underlying the 2009 rezoning, which you know, had the broad support, it was requested by the community board, had broad support by the local elected officials and was unanimously approved by everybody. So my concern here is that and the R7D zoning designation existed in 2009. And it was it was it was created in 2007. And thank you for reminding us, Amy, of where it came from. It was a choice that could have been applied here, but it wasn't. My concern is that mapping an R7D at this location is at this time is going to punch a hole in the middle of the Flatbush rezoning. And it's going to undermine the comprehensive plan that was requested and developed at that time. Now, it's a problem, you know, times change. It's 11 years ago. And the administration's priorities have clearly changed and the needs in the community have clearly changed. There is now much less interest in contextual rezoning or contextual zoning and much more interest in the creation of affordable housing for reasons that we all understand and that we heard clearly from the community board. But my concern is that we shouldn't make those kinds of changes at the behest of a single developer. That because this the Flatbush rezoning was such a comprehensive rezoning, that if we are to look at the, it may well make sense to look at the Cortelia corridor. But we should do it comprehensively and not just at this single site. Now, that being so, make it perfectly clear, I'm not in favor of an R7D here and I'll vote against it. I would be in favor. Do see that it could be appropriate at the current time to move the R7A down one block and capture this frontage. It would allow what the developer intends to do. The answer we got from the applicant about why this wasn't sufficient was it was was only slightly more market rate housing? And why would they do that if there wasn't a bigger upside for them? That's that's my goal. The second part of that is my gloss, so take it out. But they did say that it would not be a submission significant improvement on the amount of market rate housing that they currently have as of right. But I do think that, given the land use policy that is reflected in the zoning all up and down the Cortelia corridor and in the neighborhood surrounding, that it would be appropriate to extend the R7A to this site. It's largely consistent with a lot of the contextual discussion that was that underlay the 2009 result. But if we're going to go further, we got to do that in a comprehensive way that includes input from all of the stakeholders and not do it just for one applicant.
Kind of digest that long speech.
Oh, we can make it simple. I'm opposed to an R7D, but I vote for an R7A.
I don't know if she's having technical difficulties. Can't hear you, Madam Chair.
I apologize. I got pumped out of the meeting at an inopportune.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Commissioner Levin.
I first off, I was I had my hand up, so I don't know if maybe I can go while, oh, I see you're on two places now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I will get rid of myself in one place. I am entirely yours at this site. And again, with apologies, Commissioner Levin, I I cut out right after you had said that you were voting, you would be voting against it and noting that you would not be opposed to an extension of the R7A. If there is anything other substantive points that you would want to repeat with apologies to the other commissioners, I'd be very interested in hearing.
Well, I think I don't know at what point you'd want me to pick it up again. I mean, it is in the recording. It's essentially that the that the 2009 Flatbush rezoning was a comprehensive plan done with a lot of thought by the agency and with local stakeholders. And that if we're going to take a, maybe it's appropriate to take a relook at the zoning along Cortelia Road, but ought to be done comprehensively and not for one applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think this is one where with respect, we disagree. As you noted, times have changed and we do have a very keen focus on inappropriate sites along wide boulevards with access to transportation of considering private applications. Understanding the beauty of this neighborhood, it is not a proposal that the department would have at any site have said, oh, is appropriate. And so we work when a private application comes in to determine whether it warrants the support of the department. And Amy's presentation was certainly geared at showing you our thinking, thinking behind it. But I anticipate that this will be one of those instances where we have 13 commissioners because we.
That's truly true. And I'm showing my background as having come up to this work through the community board side of things.
Commissioner Delos.
First, I just wanted to say I appreciate Commissioner Levin's thoughtful, you know, sharing her thoughts. So eloquently, I really do appreciate that. And, you know, I I do believe the zoning does reflect a time and a place, right? And the time and the place was what the Bloomberg administration was thinking at that time, right? Which which was, you know, contextual down zonings for the most part. Along with depending on the neighborhood, some additional density on on wider streets. That's obviously a little bit different here on Cortelia. And then, you know, doing the voluntary inclusionary. I think it's interesting that, and I appreciate the background that that Amy brought in terms of the whole neighborhood, that there's only one voluntary inclusionary housing project in this entire neighborhood, right? And meanwhile, there's like huge demand in this community for affordable housing. It's one of the neighborhoods where there's like a lot of displacement risk going on. So I mean, I'm, you know, I have to think more about the R7A versus R7D. I hear it. You know, I, you know, it seems that this owner has owned the land for quite a while. I don't, I hope that the supermarket would be replaced regardless of whether or not it's an A or a D just because of the owner that we're talking about here. But you know, 10 or 15 years difference is actually a long time in the life of a city or in the life of a neighborhood. Or, I mean, you know, the number of homeless people in the city of New York has gone up considerably since that time. So I but I very much appreciate your points.
I just want to clarify that the the one affordable development in the neighborhood didn't use voluntary inclusionary housing. It's actually outside of VIH area. As you probably know, it's a Manny project.
Very well. Yeah, no, it's one that has been in the works for for a while. But that's my point, that there really hasn't been any any affordable housing outside of that project.
Absolutely.
I'm having difficulty seeing the hand raise function. Could you let me know if other hands are raised?
Sure, I, there are no other hands raised at this point.
Okay, and again, I thank the commissioners. I think that when we face these these difficult discussions, when we face policy issues, when we each have our own thoughts about a changing city, it actually is the commission at its at its best. I I welcome the fact that so frequently we see projects and all believe that they are well-developed projects, but equally I value when there are differences. And especially when they are deeply unwell considered reasons for having differences of view. So is that it as far as post hearing follow up?
That's it. Yes, that's the end of our agenda.
Great. Well, I will look forward to seeing you all at least virtually on Wednesday.
Okay.
Bye bye.